Recording.
Thank you Superintendent. A call to order the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of September 30th, 2020. Order clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Lombardi?
Present.
Mrs. Shearrest?
Here.
Mr. Cunnell?
Here.
Mrs. Johannes?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mayo? I don't hear her. Mrs. Mayo?
Here.
Mrs. Vada?
Here.
That's everyone.
Thank you. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, let me, welcome everyone and thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's meeting. We have 271 people on, so this will be a very interesting meeting. I, I, I think that if, so, well, if any committee members want to speak, I can't see everybody at the same time. Or if anybody wants to speak, please use the raise your hand signal. And I think that should bump you up to the top. Let us just take care of some housekeeping measures and then we'll move on to the agenda item that everybody's here for. So there's a consent agenda item. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll adjourn motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
You have that Fatima? All in favor? I. All opposed, the ayes have it. Alright, let's move on to the topic of the night. It's the superintendent's report on phase in reopening plan. Discussion vote or other action. Let me just go over what, what I'm hoping are the ground rules. I'm gonna have the superintendent address the public with this plan moving forward and how we are dealing with the positive case at NSES. Once the administration speaks, I will ask the school committee if they have any questions. We will then ask for public input. Please be respectful of everyone's opinion. And I will limit discussion to three minutes per person. Understanding that I don't want to cut anybody's opinion or speech off, but there are quite a few people on this meeting. The other thing is if somebody else already made your point and you just want to say, I agree with Mr. Lombardi or whoever makes the point, then that would be great as well. Superintendent, do you want to start? I see, let me just, Ms. Russ, and I see your hand up. You have a question?
That's for the public comments section.
Alright, well, well, okay. And Mark, same thing? Okay Superintendent?
Well, thank you, thank you very much. We're up to 300 people, which is a fantastic show of support and, and concern about our schools and it, it's actually great to see so many people participating. So, I'm going to just give a sort of a overhead view of what's going on and where we're at. And then I'm going to ask our principals to speak about their specific schools. And together we'll wrap it up and we'll have some recommendations and certainly be here to field any questions. So, first of all, I just want to address a couple of things. The, the, the governor's October 13th date that she set for full reopening. That was actually somewhat miscommunicated. Now, when the governor referred to at her, her initial press conference as October 13th for full reopening. She did issue a correction at, at, at a conference a, a couple of days later. And that's, that is full reopening based on the plans that have been submitted by the department, by the school departments. So that doesn't mean full reopening that everybody automatically comes in on October 13th. It is full reopening based on our plans. Over the summer, we submitted plans for full reopening, partial reopening, limited reopening, and distance learning. So, you know, those, those, those plans were, were, were developed over the summer. They were shared publicly, they were discussed by the school committee. They were submitted to the Department of Ed, they were reviewed and approved by the commissioner and the Department of Health. So again, I just want to reiterate, full reopening refers to full reopening in the district's plans that were submitted and improved, approved by the Department of Ed. So, we have not changed anything that was based on that original plan. We have been proceeding according to everything we laid out. What I had asked to, to the school committee over the summer was that rather than just everybody coming in at once, that we do a phased reopening. Which is exactly what many, many districts have done. So, our phased opening, I had asked the school committee for, you know, three weeks, hybrid K to 12. And the reason for the hybrid was to, let me just say, everything is, there's a lot different this year. And we needed time to get our, 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 our protocols and our processes together that we had planned over the summer and put into place during the school year. We needed time with the children to get them acclimated to the new processes and protocols. Wearing the mask, having mask breaks, how they were going to move in the classroom, how they were going to move in the buildings. We needed time to get everybody acclimated to a, a, a distance learning model. Whether they were choosing because of medical reasons at home to do full-time distance learning. Or under the hybrid, they were in school plus doing distance learning. And one of the reasons to have that model in place and to have all teachers as distance learning or at-home learning teachers is because of the anticipation that as the fall went on, we would need to be flexible. And would most likely be, have classes, teachers and students going in and out of quarantine over a period of months. So, we designed everything to be flexible. To mitigate as much risk as possible. And within this hybrid model, we, we've also had some benefits as, as, as far as reopening. One, we're able to in every classroom retain six feet or more between students. Which, as you know, six feet is the magic number. That, you know, that's, that's sort of the standard. When you go out to a restaurant, everywhere you go, it's six feet, six feet, six feet. Under hybrid, we can maintain six feet in a classroom. And that we needed, we certainly needed that for, for a safety standpoint. Our cafeterias, we're able to seat students in the cafeteria with sufficient distancing. So that they can remove their masks, they can eat their lunch, they can return their masks and, and move on to their class. And that cafeteria for us is, is a real concern because the majority of cases that are happening throughout the, the, the country are often related to eating in restaurants. And essentially, that's what our cafeteria is, is a restaurant, but much more densely packed. So, we have to be very sensitive on how we deliver breakfast and lunch or any meal services. We also had a concern with our buses. So, the Department of Health has limited buses to 50% capacity or 36 students maximum. We have 13 buses, they seat 77 students, we're limited to 36 students on those buses. In addition to that, and again, this, this isn't just our transportation provider, but this is bus companies throughout the state. There was a, a flurry of resignations of bus drivers by all the companies in the week prior to the opening of school. So, one of the reasons that we were able to run the buses that we did is that, one, we were under the hybrid, so we could actually run fewer buses and still transport our students. And two, our neighbors over, over in Barreville didn't open their middle and high schools. And so we were able to use the Barreville bus drivers to, to transport North Smithfield students. So, that, that was a benefit and helped us transport. So we, we didn't have to turn any way, anyone away at the bus stop. Plus, again, under the hybrid, it gave the students a chance to learn, you know, new movements around the building. But it also gave a significant amount of freedom in the classroom, in the hallways, because they weren't packed full of kids. So, that's right now, that's where we stand now. And I had said about a month ago or at a couple of different school committee meetings that once we get our two or three weeks into the school year, which is where we're at right now. As a community, as a school district, we, we have some difficult decisions. Because the, there is the pressure, there is the expectation to start opening up fully. And to be honest, we want to open up fully. We truly believe that that is the best model for the students. Except, we also have to keep, be mindful of the public health aspect of this. So, and, and I'm gonna mention what happened to NSES in a moment. So, so the question becomes, are we ready to open? And here's the thing. North Smithfield is actually in a very good spot. We've done everything right. We have, the, the, the governor has put out five metrics for reopening. And that is statewide readiness. And the state has to be in phase three or higher, which it is, it's in phase three. Even though cases are ticking up, the, we're, we're still in phase three in the state. Municipal readiness, how many cases per 10, 100,000 do we have, or 10,000, I forget, I forget which. North Smithfield, the cases, yes, they are climbing, but they're still below that threshold. Testing readiness, the governor, can the governor offer a rapid test or 48-hour turnaround? Yes, they can. There are 12 spot places within Rhode Island that offer priority testing for K-12 staff, students and families. Families, I believe, or I'm not, yeah. And, and they're, and they're there and it's easily accessible. And I can attest, I've been, I had to be tested. I'm probably one of about maybe 20, 25 staff members within the school district that have had to be tested. And yes, easy access to testing for ourselves and our students with a very quick turnaround of results. Supply readiness. We, we've been reviewed by the Department of Health, we have ample supplies, the state has supplies, masks and cleaning supplies, we're ready for that. And then there's the operational readiness. Now, we were reviewed by the Department of Health, had a 38-point checklist, went through all of our schools, and we passed every measure. And again, I want to highlight the, the, the main measure. One of them is our, our ventilation system. There are many, many schools across the state that are closed right now because their ventilation systems can't handle reopening. They can't handle students in the classroom and turn over the air. So, a lot of the schools that have opened, you know, at, at this stage, they're using box fans and HEPA filters. We've been told by the Department of Ed, by the engineers, we don't need that because we made the investment in updating and repairing and servicing our ventilation systems back in June before the Department of Health put out its guidelines on HVAC systems. So, so what I'm saying is that North Smithfield has essentially checked every box. As far as the state and the Department of Health and the Department of Education is concerned. Now, another box that we had is transportation. And last week, I put out a survey to all of our families and I asked, do you absolutely positively need to ride the bus, AM, PM, both AM and PM? And I want to thank the families that, that answered. I want to thank those who that, who contact me, contacted me and say, and said, you know, you know, we want to keep seats available on the bus for students who really need it. You know, I can, I can drop my kid off and pick them up to and from school. I can make an arrangement to carpool. And I really want to thank the community to come together because based on that survey, we have room on our buses. Now, now, I can't say if, 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 if not everybody filled out the survey, we could be in for a nasty surprise at, at the bus stop if there's more people expecting to get on the bus than, than indicated so in the survey. So, in all respects, from the facilities and from our checklist, we are ready for full reopening. Now, what I also said is that in order to do full reopening, if, if this, we have to make some tough decisions. And there will have to be some, some major compromises and some priorities set. So, just, just a couple of things. And then I'm going to ask the, the principals to speak on behalf of their buildings on what a full reopening would look like. And then we'll, we'll follow it up with some, some other information. One of the things I can tell you is that if we do a, as we go into full reopening, the magic number of six feet within our classes, we're not going to be able to maintain that. Now, originally, the Department of Health had guidance and they said that, you know, six feet is ideal, six feet or more is the best you can do. You know, go for six feet. And then guidance changed and they said, well, you know, sometimes you can't get six feet, five feet, four feet, three feet is fine, three feet minimum. You know, you could do three feet, as long as you're in stable groups, you don't have a lot of student movement, moving between different groups. And as long as the masks are on all the time. And so a lot of us fixated on the three feet. And so, you know, we, we looked at our classrooms and we took square footage and we did mockups and we thought, okay, we, we can do six feet under hybrid. If we reopen, we're down to four feet, five feet, maybe three feet. In some, some rooms that we have, based on the number of in-person students, we're below three feet. But he, here's the thing, the Department of Health guidance changed and they removed the, the minimum foot requirement, requirements. They removed the minimum space requirement. So as far as the guidance from Department of Health, we could be one foot apart. As long as we're in stable groups or wear masks. Now, this has caused a, a lot of issues amongst the school community because we're trying to make this disconnect that, okay, we have to be six feet in the grocery store. We have to be six feet in any, at the restaurant. But when we get to school, it's okay to be closer. We have to separate on the buses, we're limited to, you know, how, how, how many students we can sit, sit on a bus and how close kids can be on a bus. But in a classroom, it's okay. So I'm just pointing this out as, as, again, we are going to follow the Department of Health guidance where it may, even where in, in some, some opinions, some cases, it, it kind of contradicts itself. So, so, we've been meeting with, as an admin team with the principals and coming up with what would full in-person opening look like? And really, the, the critical school for this is the elementary school. And I say the elementary school because in all state models, even in our reopening plan, the focus for a full return is at, at K through five. The state, our plans, while we do, would like to see full return, even across the state, from grade seven to grade 12, hybrid is considered full return. By the Department of Ed, by the, the, by the governor's office, and even within our plans. Yes, we want to bring back more kids, but yes, hybrid is considered a full return model. But the focus is across the state, K through six, K through five, for the obvious reasons of we need, parents need to, you know, have a place for their kids to go so that they can go to work. So, at NSES, and I'm gonna ask Salpe, our, our school nurse, to talk about the public health aspects of the full return. And what she has seen, is seeing and what she has experienced at NSES especially this week. And then Jen Dana will talk about what her, what the NSES full return model would look like and what, what are the compromises? So, Salpe, would you mind? Or, or, or should I, should I ask Mr. Chair if the school committee has any questions up till this point?
You can ask. I, I was gonna go to the end of your whole presentation. And then ask for questions, but if, obviously if any school committee member would like to ask a question, please feel free.
I couldn't quite hear that question. Alright, so, Salpe, would you mind unmuting and could you speak? About NSES?
Yes, so since we've been open, hybrid on the 15th through the 30th today. It's been 10 days since students have been in the school building. Mondays being a distant learning day. We have used our isolation room 18 times. And we've had to actually open our overflow isolation room just today for additional students. Parents are sending in the attestation form in the elementary school, the middle and the high, they are able to do it on their computers, but parents have to fill out the attestation forms and send them in. And those who are doing it every day, thank you very much. There's about 20 or so parents who are forgetting because of the hustle of sending their kid in, and that's understandable. I may have forgotten a few myself before I entered the building. And if I screen the students, I do screen the students if I'm not able to get in touch with the parents. Some parents say, oh, I have it in my hand, can I just come and drop it off? As long as they can verbalize that they've tested them prior to screening them, prior to entering the building, that is more of a verbal consent and I do document that. If a student arrives to my office with a pass from the teacher to let me know that the child now has one of the symptoms that's on the COVID screening tests, I stop them at the door. I interview them outside of the office. And then at that time, I determine if the student is having symptoms, if they need to be put in the isolation room. Or if they're just a radical, regular medical checkup and they come into the regular nurse's office. If a student has one symptom and they have no other concerns, I will notify the parent to come pick them up as part of the Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines. And they will just need to stay home for 24 hours until their symptoms are gone and they are fever-free. So they would have to be a total of 24 hours out of the building. If a student has two or more of the symptoms that are located on the bottom portion of the playbook that I had sent out, which would be the headache, fever, congestion, runny nose, and a couple of the other mild symptoms, if they have two or more, I have to enter them into the Rhode Island Department of Health playbook portal. And then that student would have to go get tested for COVID. A form would go with them, I give them the 1-800 number and they would have to go to a pre-K through 12 testing site to get tested. I recommend the testing sites as opposed to going to an urgent care center or your pediatrician's office because the turnaround time is three to seven days otherwise. And if a student is being tested, the whole family would have to basically be quarantined during that time. And a rapid negative test is not sufficient, we would need a PCR test resulted as negative prior to entering the building. Their siblings can return once the person who has been tested is negative. Unless the, now the siblings are showing symptoms, then they would have to go get tested and it starts over again with the quarantining until the negatives are, results come back. And if they do come back positive, then the Department of Health would notify me for contact tracing. And in contact tracing, at this time, it's the person who is within six feet of greater than 15 minutes would be the student in front, student behind, student on the left, student on the right. Next to them in the cafeteria. All of those are contact traces. And it could be the teacher or the reading specialist or the math specialist or the hearing or speech and if they go say, if they've been in contact with them for 15 minutes.
Sal, Salpe is on a little bit of a delay, she won't hear me for about maybe 30 seconds.
Going back full in person. If less than six feet.
Okay, Salpe, you, you're, you're on very much a delay. What I'd like to, yep, hang on, what I'd like to do, if, if some folks could turn off, if some folks could turn off their videos if, if they don't need to, so that we can sort of, you know, save some bandwidth.
Okay.
Okay, and let's see if that helps bring Salpe back. Okay, Salpe, how are you doing now? I can now see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we, we got to, we, 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 we got to the point where if a student in a classroom was identified as being COVID positive.
Okay.
That who would be, who would go into quarantine?
So, the student, the Department of Health would contact me and say, we have a positive case, I would need their contact tracing. In that situation, I would get the classroom roster, find out what the seating chart is, go to the cafeteria, find out what the seating chart was, and also call the bus company for immediate contact traces would be anybody less than six feet in front of the student, behind the student, to the left or to the right in the classroom. And I would give the Department of Health the contact information of the students and the student's parents' name and number. And they would have to contact them and say that they were a contact tracer of a positive student. Now, anybody who's considered a contact of a positive now has to quarantine for the amount of 14 days. And at the 10-day mark, they would have to go get tested. They don't recommend getting tested prior to the 10 days because they are asymptomatic and it will come back as a false negative.
And, and, and we did have a, a positive test this week. And positive result. And as a result, we did have to, the Department of Health recommended that we, we put the preschool under quarantine. And along with several staff members. And, you know, and, and this, this is one of the things that I, I also want to stress as, as Salpe, as we went through this. And, you know, this, this was an unfortunate learning curve for us because this is the first time we had a positive case. And, you know, I want to thank Salpe and Jen Dana for taking point on this. And this, this morning, actually, they debriefed with the principals in the other schools because, to share the experience because this is, this is going to continue to happen. And sooner than, than we, we, we would hope actually. And what, what, what I also do want to stress in this is, is that and this struck me with the full reopening, I had not really considered this. Is that when a student is tested positive, it's pretty much, you, you bring a six-foot radius around that student. And it, those are the students who have to then go into quarantine along with their families. The more kids we bring back and the less we are able to maintain that six-foot radius around a student, when, when we do have an infection, more students, more families will have to go into quarantine as a result of their proximity to that student in the closeness of the seating in the class or the cafeteria or the bus. You know, it is, it is that radius or even the carpool. So, you know, that, that is something to, we really need to consider as we bring more students back in. That there will be continued infections and we will have to isolate those, those students along with those families. The, the other thing that was, that kind of struck us with this one is in the contact tracing, how many people were, were affected even with maintaining stable groups? And, and, and all I can say is with the stable groups is that we can only control or be as stable as we can during the, during the school day. We have no control over, you know, the kids playing with each, playing together after school or before school or, or weekend, you know, get-togethers. We, we, we don't have any influence in that. All we can do is just try to keep our students safe and doing what they need to do during the time that we have them. And let me tell you, the kids have been absolutely brilliant with the masks. They have stepped up and they are cleaning their hands and they are doing everything they can to protect their classmates and their teachers. The other thing that, and, and again, there's not a lot I can share due to HIPAA, due to, you know, all kinds of things, but I just want to, just, just make a mention for the teachers. Sorry to sidetrack on this one. As we got closer to school reopening across the state, there were a mass resignation of teachers and teachers going to retirements or taking leave of absences. And in fact, in some districts, they were afraid that they wouldn't even be able to open. I know in a couple of the districts in the southern part of the state, which not necessarily, maybe about twice or twice the size of ours, they had 20 or 30 teachers not returning to work because they have medical complications. They have families with, you know, vulnerable, they're vulnerable families. So they were afraid whether or not they were going to be able to reopen. And there is a massive shortage of substitute teachers and, you know, people to fill positions. North Smithfield, our teachers are here. They didn't resign, retire, take leaves. We have three, we had three who retired and yes, their retirement was, was premature. You know, but they were eligible to retire, but they were of an age or had a medical reason that, okay, this was the time. We had, we do have several who are out on FMLA because they have, they have medical issues. You know, that, that, that coming back and getting infected is problematic for them. The, the teachers that were, the staff that were affected at NSCS, we have a cancer survivor. And, oh God. And a teacher, a speech teacher who is eight months pregnant. Our teachers are coming to work. And they are doing their jobs. And I will not lie to you that this is not stressful or frightening. And I know people out there will say, oh yeah, well, grocery clerks go to work and, you know, people go to work. The difference is, is that when you go to a shop or a restaurant, the, when you interact with somebody, it's, it's quick. You know, it's, it's the guidance from the Department of Health is, if you, and when we do contact tracing, it's when you're exposed to the person for 15 minutes, 14, 15 minutes or more. Our teachers are with the kids and they're close. It's not a passing relationship. So, wow, I didn't expect this. Hey, Jen, would you like to talk about, or Salpi, would you like to finish up? Or Jen, would you like to keep talking about NSCS? Thank you.
Sure. So I would really like to echo, I would really like to echo what Mike said. Our teachers have been miraculous in this entire thing. This is not what any of us signed up for. When we went to school, it was not to do this. We went to school and we got trained and we do this job because we love our students and we love our families. And this is just a whole new world for us. So really, at the elementary level, as Mike said, there is a huge push to get us back. And up until this point, I think we were in agreement and we recognize that. We, we don't believe in putting little people in front of Chromebooks for six hours a day. That's not developmentally appropriate. That's not the way that we run things at this school. We have a firm belief in establishing close relationships with our students and that is done by seeing them face-to-face day in and day out. And then yesterday happened. And the reality of what yesterday brought happened. And the feeling that that brought and the scared feelings that that brought to our entire school community happened. We have eight members of our school faculty on quarantine right now. And they are critical members of our faculty. They are people who are our service provider.
I did say we were going to break North Smithfield's internet tonight. Can anybody else, Jen, I don't know if you can hear me. You froze up for a moment.
Am I muted? Mike, did I freeze?
You're, you're froze, but now, now you're back.
Just wanted to be known that I'm in the library at NSCS.
Do not blame our internet for that.
No, I'm not.
All right, thank you.
I wanted to be known, I stayed here. You know, and so we put in a lot of procedures and protocols at NSCS to keep our kids very safe. We changed our whole drop-off procedure where we would have very minimal flow and crossover of students from K to 1, 2 to 3, and 4. We changed if anybody who has dropped off a student at our school, they know that we actually go out to the cars, we open car doors, we're bringing our students back that way. So we've really put in a lot of systems and structures to keep our children very safe within the cohorts that they're into right now. Bringing students back full-time, K through 4, would put a huge strain on this building. It would put a huge strain on my teachers and it would also in turn put a huge strain on our students. Reducing us down to less than six feet, going to three or even less, instead of closing down or only quarantining five students, we're shutting down an entire classroom of students, which means that instead of students being home three days a week, they're now home for 14 days or more, in addition to family members. In terms of our cafeteria, right now, our biggest lunch is at 127 kids and that's not our biggest day. In terms of bringing kiddos back, we would be taking half of our gymnasium. So our gym class would have half the size. And our gym would not be able to be used for any other additional functions within the school day or outside of the school day. Because we would have tables that would have to remain in the gym in order for us to feed our students. Our teachers and, and children have been doing an amazing job in terms of washing hands and maintaining appropriate spacing. With 23, 20 kids in a classroom, that is going to significantly reduce their ability to do that. Things like mask breaks, snacks in the classrooms, that's going to be cut down. And our kids need that time. Our teachers are getting our kids outside all the time as much as they can. But we have not even started to knock on the door of colder weather and cold and flu season. I firmly believe that kids need to be in school. I don't take that away at all. That is exactly where we need our kids to be, but not at the detriment of the health and safety of our kids or our, our school community, especially our most vulnerable little learners.
And thank you, Jen. And, and again, yesterday was a very eye-opening experience for us. Christine, are you here? I mean, because we've also talked about the full reopening at the middle school. And, and again, the focus is on grade five or six at the middle school, but we've also, you know, have, have worked out.
I can't.
Yep, you're there. What, what, what seven or eight would look like as well? So I don't know, Christine, could you, could you share your thoughts on the middle school?
Turn it off. You're not turning it off. Okay, let me know. Okay, all right.
Are you at NSCS?
I might be.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Dano did a wonderful job speaking. A lot of my points were in her speech. You know, when we brought the kids back from, to the middle school, it was such a crazy summer because we weren't, nobody got answers. Parents didn't have answers, we didn't have answers, and everyone was frustrated. And one of the things that I was most proud of, because it was always last minute that we were getting information, was that the school committee and would work with us and with Mr. St. Jean and the admin team about not just sending kids back full. And, but we also didn't say, just throw in the towel and keep kids home. We brought kids back in a, in a hybrid manner. And it was, it was a tough process. It was, you know, planning and scheduling, we, we worked together to create as many stable pods as we could. And one of the things at the middle school that, you know, I think about when we start talking about bringing, you know, more, all the kids and more kids back is the fact that when Mr. Lahar created the schedule, we were able to get our kids out of the classroom and into the lunchroom, which, you know, isn't happening across the state with everyone. But in a small community with the numbers we have, we can get them out of, you know, in a different space. Because let's face it, this kid's day is long for them because they're sitting still. You know, we want them to at least be around each other, have a change of scenery. We get them outside, we get them outside for mask breaks. But one of the things we were most proud of was Mr. Lahar worked really hard on keeping the elective choices, especially for the seventh and eighth graders. You know, they, they leave, our fifth and sixth graders stay with their stable pods for their electives. But our seventh and eighth grade students, we were able to preserve band and chorus. We were able to give them, most kids, their choices of art or tech ed. And if we bring kids back full, especially in seventh and eighth grade, we can't, I, I don't see us being able to preserve the music program the way it is right now. Mr. Canasis and our new music teacher, she's wonderful, Ms. Felker, they've come up with creative, like they worked all summer on how could we still keep that for kids? And they're spaced out and they're, and they're doing it and, you know, is it perfect like it was? No, nothing is. But right now, that's their outlet for the day. And, and I feel like we're going to have to take that away. And, and, and also same thing with lunch. Like I don't know what lunch will look like depending on the numbers. If we have to keep kids in their classrooms all day, like it's just, you know, and that, and the safety. And just watching Mr. St. Jean when he talks about the, the faculty staff and the kids. Because if kids were involved in this, we'd be probably even just as upset. Like they're our family, like these people are our family and they're your family too. We're a community. And I don't think we should rush back to anything. I think it needs to be a slow, methodical process that's well thought out and we need to work together on it. We can't beef, you know, up against each other and we have to really think about the health and safety of our kids. And, you know, I'm proud to work in this district and I'm proud to work with, the school committee's been amazing. And Mr. St. Jean and Mrs. Arnold and everyone on the admin team. But our teachers, like if you could see our teachers throughout the day, no matter how they're feeling, they're crying one minute if they're upset. And then the minute their kids are in front of them, their faces are smiling. They're giving them everything they have and more. And there's, there's only so much people can take and that the health is important. So I just want to say that I appreciate everything everyone's been doing and I hope we can come to an agreement and work together.
So, and, and I just want to say, I have looked at the, broken down all the class sizes and the numbers. And if we did a full return, how many kids in each classroom were we talking about? And let's see, we have an echo. And at, at the elementary school, the, the grade level that most concerns me is the second grade. Because they have, believe it or not, they have the most kids and the fewest amount of kids who are full-time distance learning. So to bring back the second grade, the average class size will be around 19 or 20. Again, we're, we can't do, 14 is a six-feet radius distance based on the square footage. At the middle school in looking at grades five and six. And, and again, the state is pushing that, you know, and we, we get, we, we also know our families, you know, those, you know, with a single, I, I talked to single moms, I have working parents, I've talked, and the struggle that they're having because they can't leave their, their little ones home. You know, so I, I looked at the, the, if, if we, to go back, to go back in full, we, we want to include grade six, not just grade five, like throughout the rest of the state, but six. Grade five and six, again, if you take away the students who are on full distance learning, the average class size would be about 20, 19 to 20, some 21s in there. And again, so just, just to understand that we're, you know, even though the Department of Health allows less than six feet, we will be less than six feet. So again, just based on our experience this week, if a student becomes positive, and, and look, I'll be honest, at the end of the day, I left and we have a probable case of NSC at, at the middle school. You know, again, nothing confirmed, nothing that we can, you know, I'm going, I don't want to panic anybody. But as, as Salpi said, at, you know, she said, how many students, you know, go through the, the isolation room and the quarantine room that we've set up? We've had a series of students moving in and out of, you know, the middle school room as well. And we've had students that have gone, gone, gone home to, when we've told their, their parents that they need to get tested. So again, this is all coming. So fifth grade, sixth grade, the full return model is roughly about 19 to 21 students per classroom. Again, so we're not going to be able to maintain the social distancing, but it's allowable according to the reopening metrics. And just, and just a note on the music program, one of the things that make our music program in North Smithfield what it is, is that, you know, teacher, we have contractual classroom sizes. And at the middle school, it's 28 students per classroom because beyond that, it's, it's, in, in the high school, it's 20, usually around 28 per classroom. Our music teachers takes, it taken students up to 56. You know, they, we don't follow the contractual caps for classroom sizes because it's important that our musicians, our, our chorists, our band members, they get together and they perform as a unit, not as individual classes that then get put together to do a concert. At the, the middle school, keeping it, due to the full return with the music class, we have 36 students in, in, in band, for example, a section of band. We just can't have that. We don't have any kind of space that would accommodate that many students, especially with the extra space you need for band and music. You know, because of the vocal, the singing, the, the instruments. There's more aerosols in the air, you need greater distance. Whereas many districts in the state have canceled their music programs and, and basically turned music class into music appreciation, music history. We're trying to keep it intact and have our kids practice and perform. And we can do that under the hybrid model. And we've been racking our brains to try to figure out on a full reopening, how we can maintain the music program. But at the middle school, unlike you'll, you'll hear at the high school, that we're, we're space-bound. We just don't have big rooms for that. And even the, the thought of, you know, we talked about, I met with Mr. Canasis today and just kind of brainstorming around this. And the question was, well, what about the cafeteria? Again, we probably have to reschedule the whole building, but the band meets on period four and chorus is period six. Lunch is around period five and everything we do, every change of students has to be a full sanitation. So it's a matter of cleaning, you know, deep cleaning between movement of students. And so now we run into issues even, even moving students into larger spaces like that because of all the disinfecting and, and cleaning that happens in between. But we're working on it. We're trying to figure out ways in which we, we can make this happen. Tim, would you want to talk about the high school? And I'll, I'll just add one thing for the high school. High school doesn't have the advantage of the elementary in the middle. And middle pseudo in, in grade seven and eight, they can't maintain stable pods or stable groups. There's just no physical way we can schedule or have a high school operate to maintain stable groups. So they will be mixing and matching every step of the way. So, sorry, Mr. McGee?
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, at the high school, let me start out by, by just commending everybody that's involved in, in the whole school. The kids are absolutely wonderful. They do everything that we ask, almost to a point where it's scary right now. I've never had them behave as well as they have. The teachers are going way above and beyond what they need to do. I, I took a walk around the building the other day and I, I popped into classes and I was actually being disruptive just watching it because they had, they had, they were managing three or four different things at a time. They're teaching distant learners on, on one machine. They're teaching the class in front of them on a, on a different machine. They've got notes on it, on their desk and so forth. They're multitasking. This is much, much harder for teachers than it, it would be to have students in front of them. We'd much prefer to have the students in front of them, but we're just dealing with what, what we have to deal with. I, it's not as good as having everybody in-person learning and I realize that. And, and, and I will say, we're not going to be able to cover all the standards that we normally do. But I feel like if we, by doing it the way we're doing it, is the best way that we can deliver it for the time being. At least if we go this way, there'll be a next time to, to, to learn it later. At least if we go this way, there'll be a next time to 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 learn it later. If 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 we move too fast right now, I I think I think we're gonna be, we we'll be going backwards. I have a bunch of what what I what I call fragile teachers right now. I'm gonna estimate, well, I I can't even come up with a number, but I can tell you that there are many that thought about not coming back and and taking some sort of a leave to 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 stay away from the classroom. They did come back. They're doing a great job. We're getting more comfortable with the amount of kids that we have and then spacing them out as well as we do. But I think that if we do force them to 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 push them into rooms and and push these teachers out of their comfort zone, they'll find a way to do something just to just to for them to stay safe and have their families be safe, just just find a way to back out of out of that. I think what that will end up will end up short teachers that way. Right now, uh, Mr. Boss has has done a great job with going out and getting substitutes and uh we call him the sub whisperer. He's worked in other districts before and he 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 has a lot of connections, so he's doing a good job getting people in there for us right now. But we do have some that are on a quarantine right now. So that's already happened to us. But I I will say that the teachers are doing a phenomenal job, the kids are doing a phenomenal job, everybody's doing everything just the way they're supposed to be doing. My biggest problem at the high school is is lunches because that's the one time when all the students are exposed to each other. So to mitigate that, what we did is we assigned uh tables for the lunchroom. You have to set an assigned seat and an assigned table and they do it each day. That way, the children are only exposed to one or two other people without a mask throughout the day. I am in a group right now with many northern principals and we talk daily. And many of them were in trouble from the Department of Health because they're not uh tracing what's happening at lunch. Lunch is a big thing. If you if you let the students go outside, you don't know who they're with, you don't know who they're eating with, you don't know how far apart they are, it's hard to monitor. So the best thing for us was to do assigned seating and it it's proving to be the best way that it works. The problem is if we go to a full return model, I don't have enough room in the cafeteria to maintain the assigned seating. So I have to find different ways to do lunches and and I'm not a hundred percent sure I do have some ideas. But that's 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 one of the main things. The other thing is transportation. So uh right now, if I if I can only have thirty six students on a bus, trying to get all my students in all on the same day, that that that's problematic as well. So those are my my two big hurdles. Transportation, lunch, and perhaps the biggest one is if we do go back full time, I think some of my teachers that are in somewhat vulnerable situations, both themselves uh and family members, I think I think we'll see some of them not return. So so that's that's that that would be a problem as well.
And and we're we're already having a hard time uh with staffing because of the um it it the the this this is something I had said before. I mean, we work with children all day long. These kids are wonderful, they're they're incredible, uh but the younger they are, the more fluids they leak. And they're constantly making themselves and e- and and us sick. And so as educators, we generally spend um uh the bulk of the year sick. Except now we don't know what kind of sick we are. Are we just sick, regular sick sick or are we COVID sick? So and like, for example, that that's why I had, I I got tested last week. Our assistant superintendent uh is tested. There's been about twenty twenty three of us now that have been tested because we're sick, but we don't know what kind of sick and we can't risk spreading it to everybody else. And and once, once you do feel that way, we do have the rapid test, which is available by the end of the day, but according to Department of Health, you're not supposed to return until that second test, the the, you know, I I forgot the acronym for it, you know, but the regular.
PCR.
Thank you. Um, I'll still forget it to uh by tomorrow. But that takes forty eight hours and we can't return to work until we get the clearance of the regular test. So e- even for coverage right now, I think uh was it today or 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 tomorrow? I think it was today. At NSCS, the assistant principal was covering classes because we're just out of teachers and we don't have enough subs. And again, we 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 look at that situation, we'll continue and we're trying to be as flexible as possible. And even setting up some of us who that uh if 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 we are on quarantine and we're not, you know, really ill, we're 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 working from home and we're teaching from home. We will do a reverse distance learning. We will have the teacher broadcast from home into the classroom while we try to arrange coverage to have an adult in that room to supervise the children. So the teacher can teach them while she's at home. So it it it's all very complicated. The other thing I just want to say regarding high schools is that uh I, as Mr. McGee is is in touch with um his fellow high school principals in the northern region, I I'm in touch with superintendents around the region in the state. And high schools, for the most part, that the vast majority of high schools in the state are on hybrid, if they're even open at this stage, um those that are open are on hybrid and intend to remain on hybrid. And this is something that the Department of Health, Department of Ed and the the Governor's Office said, yeah, high schools can be hybrid because the kids are are older, more responsible and can be left at home alone. Now, that's that's chronological age. I'm sure there's a lot of parents out there saying that, no, I don't want my kid at home regardless how old, you know, he or she is. But high schools generally, uh the hybrid model is accepted. Now, I did reach out to a couple of the schools that have done a full reopening. And one is North Providence went back uh this week, uh full reopening at the high school. The, I I did check with the, I did ask the superintendent of the what percentage of parents are choosing uh distance learning because, again, for the at-home learners, i- 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 it it while it creates this extra level of instruction, it does relieve the numbers in the building and it allows, you know, uh for transportation, for social distancing. North Providence has about thirty percent of their their students are on distance learning. We started out uh in in, I'm sorry, Pro- East, North Providence has about thirty percent. In North Smithfield, we started out at about twenty three percent uh on distance learning. Once we went hybrid, you know, a number of parents were looking at that in-school experience and they 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 requested that their children come back and even though we asked for a one, what a a a one quarter or a uh a trimester commitment, we we don't feel, we 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 don't want to turn anybody away, especially if the family situation changes and those two days become critical and in 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 the kids do need to come in, or if the distance learning piece just isn't working for the for the student and they need that uh in person. So we're down to about in uh uh between nineteen and twenty percent uh distance learning. So when I talked to the superintendent in, you know, North Providence, he said that, yeah, if 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 he were down in that sort of twenty, twenty one percent of distance learning, he couldn't do a full reopening in North Providence, you know, it 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 it's the amount of people at home that allowed the full reopening. And that's true uh in Charahoe. That's the others, the other high school I'm aware that has done a full reopening. Westley is closed, they brought their nines and their twelves in, uh and their tens and elevens are on hybrid. And, you know, I just want to say, and and it sounds like it, you know, I it it sounds like we're being very negative about reopening and we're trying to advocate, please, please don't. If we were to have this meeting uh two nights ago before yesterday, we you would probably have heard a little different tone. Because what what essentially happened is reality. You know, we're doing well, kids are fantastic, the kids, you know, the teachers, you know, we're feeling distressed. We got hit with some reality yesterday. And there's going to be pockets of reality that are, I'm telling you, are coming up. You know, so we're we're being more hesitant and cautious than we would have been if this 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 meeting were just a couple of days ago. So I just just want you to realize. Now, at the high school, we did, we we have discussed, okay, if we had to bring back some group, you know, maybe, you know, ninth grade we could target, maybe ninth grade could be a priority uh grade level to bring back. And we would just work and accommodate uh the students in the grade levels as as much as possible. So at this stage, I mean, uh we've been meeting this week, you know, and and trying to say, you know, what kind of recommendation do we come back to the school committee with? What do we as uh the the principals and teachers and and again, I I've also been meeting with the uh and we've been meeting with the uh I met with the high school department heads today. I met with the team leaders at the middle school yesterday. Unfortunately, I I'm meeting with the grade level leaders tomorrow at NSCS. I wish I could have moved things further so I could have their voices in my head. You know, for tonight. At this stage, where we are recommending caution, we are recommending that even though we had to shut down our PK for two weeks, we want our kindergarten and our first grade students back. You know, we we will do what it takes to bring K and one back because K and one, they're not a distance learning group, they need to be in. So we would be recommending that starting Monday, we would bring our kindergarten back in full. Again, we unfortunately, we're still looking at the four days a week, we're not looking at five days. And I know that's that's so difficult for so many families, that Monday is a question mark. But again, like a lot of districts have 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 put aside a Monday or put aside a Wednesday. We need to hold on to that because we are just having so, you know, we have such a mix of kids in school, out of school. We have to keep ourselves nimble for, um honestly, you know, we we had it, we had a send can can uh preschool on 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 distance learning. We're gonna do it with other classes and grade levels, I guarantee that. We need to keep the Mondays uh open. There's there's a lot of things that we do on Monday um with the kids, even i- i- as as at-home learners. So and to go forward, you know, I we would recommend that kindergarten would come back uh starting next week. The following week would be first grade. We did um have one of our models would be the following week, we we bring in first grade and fifth grade. And again, we've had a lot of different plans. Right now, all I can say is that the old, the two grade levels I am comfortable to recommend, and even at that is with great hesitancy, is K and one. And I'd like to have another week or so to really consider and work on, work out the other grade levels. K and one, again, because our little ones, they 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 really need to be in with the teachers. I want to bring grade two back. Grade two frightens me because of the class size. You know, if there were more students in grade two who were on distance learning, or if we just had fewer students enrolled in grade two, I would feel more comfortable. Three and four is is kind of touch and go. They're 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 at that tight area where the average class size minus your distance learners would be in that seventeen to eighteen student range. Again, allowable, doable in the classroom, not with six feet and with a lot of changes in the cafeteria and how we move around the school. So a- all I'm saying is that we do want our kids back. But we're also very cognizant of the spread of the infection, the vulnerabilities amongst our teachers and students and families. And, you know, we're we're advocating caution at this point, even though I know for some, this 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 is painful and inconvenient. And but we will keep working to bring more students back and to to sort of um help build a schedule that that works for um our single parents and our our families that are are, you know, are are working. So at that stage, and I'm sorry, this this probably went on a little longer than anticipated. You know, Mr. Lombardi, if 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 you would like to take it from this point and maybe field questions, or if the school committee has any questions or comments they would like to share?
Thank you, Superintendent. I know that uh Vice Chairwoman Mayo wanted to comment and then Secretary Vada.
Thank you very much, and I would really like to thank the administrators and the superintendent for uh all the information that they just passed on to us. And I have a couple of takeaways um from everything that they said, and then I would just like to share my own thoughts. Number one, October thirteenth is not set in stone, it's meant as a benchmark to prove to the state that we're moving forward with our plan. Number two, COVID has hit us. It was two weeks to the day that we opened our PK classes to in-person in spite of all our precautions and safety nets. We've closed our PK classrooms for two weeks and our youngest students are now distance learning as a result. Number three, we are ready for full reopening, but there are problems. However, hybrid is accepted as a full return model. And number four, um kindergarten and first grade will be starting next week as in-person. I actually was at North Smithfield Elementary School earlier today and I witnessed everything that Mrs. Dano mentioned. And I was absolutely amazed at how smoothly everything was working for the two hundred and thirty nine students in the A through L pod. And it will work for the sixty one additional M through Z kindergarteners and first graders. But beyond that, I just don't know how many more students we dare add and still be safe. Because North Smithfield has done so well and because Rhode Island as a whole has done fairly well, some people feel that the idea of a pandemic is a hoax and that we need to get our students back to school full time by October thirteenth. But our goal is full time in person, as uh Mr. St. Jean stated, because we know that that is education at its best, but our priority is to do it in ways that will keep everyone safe and well. I've recently been receiving many copies of the same letter that I thought was from North Smithfield parents demanding that we open fully by October thirteenth. And I was really concerned about all the negative issues that were referenced in that letter because I know how much hard work has gone into making this hybrid education as successful as possible. And I really thought that we were doing a pretty good job. But the letter was actually from a personal blog called Politics of Parenting. And it's been circulating around the internet for the month of September. So it's not at all a representation of what is actually happening in North Smithfield. And the letter ends by saying that the senders take this issue seriously and will do whatever is necessary to protect their children, including litigation, if schools are not reopened by the stated timeline of October thirteenth. And I was a little taken back by this because I would hope that the community would realize that we also take this seriously, as do the knowledgeable and competent administrators who are making the decisions to protect our children and their educational, physical and emotional well-being. Is hybrid learning ideal? No. But is it doable? Yes. And we have to realize that this is a pandena- a pandemic and North Smithfield is not immune to it. It's already touched one school and it's real now. Our normal life as we knew it is on hold, whether we like it or not, and that creates a lot of strain and stress, as has been mentioned. Everyone is out of their comfort zone, parents, teachers, kids, administrators, community members. But to look on the bright side, which I try to do, it's created opportunities for everyone to stretch themselves, to see what they're capable of, to have a growth mindset and to make the best of it. And that's probably the last thing that some of you who are attending this meeting want to hear. But there is no way that everyone will be satisfied with our decisions and I get that. I understand why some parents want their children to go back full time. But there are probably just as many parents who are willing to wait until the time is right. I think that North Smithfield is probably the most ready and prepared school system in the state for hybrid learning. But we're not ready for full in-person, especially with the situation at NSCS. We need to see how that evolves. And I'm painfully aware what that statement means for all the opportunities, activities and milestones that our children are missing. But in my opinion, full in-person is not worth the risks and compromises at this point in time. Hopefully soon, because that is our ultimate goal, but safety first. So my choice for us is to walk slowly and carry a big caution sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Mayo. Um, Spada?
Thank you. I'd like to echo uh Mrs. Mayo's remarks. As a school committee, we need to look out for the best interests of all the children in this community. While many of you demand in-school full-time, just as many are adamantly opposed to it. My daughter should be in DC right now, but she's living in my basement. None of us is happy with the situation or with the choices. So as Jean said, this committee received a duplicate letter from numerous parents. The letter, borrowed from an out-of-state parent Facebook site, suggests that we need to listen to all families and teachers. That is exactly what we are doing. And it's what makes this, this decision so difficult for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other school committee members want to speak? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Connell, I just, I have a few questions first, and forgive me because I was having technical difficulties at the start of this presentation. So I may have missed the answer to these questions, Mr. Superintendent. So what happens if, this is a transportation question. If parents, for whatever reason, who had more, who had otherwise elected to bring their child to school. As an emergency or they're feeling, you know, ill or something else that's non-COVID related, whatever it might be. They need their child to get to school by being caught in the bus. That results in an overflow of thirty-six person limit. Does that get reported? Is, is that something we track? Is that, what's the situation there for that?
I, I have authorized the, the bus company to not turn anybody away.
Okay.
So if, if we do exceed that, you know, by, by a couple of students, that, that's okay. If it becomes a problematic on that route in its entirety, we'll have to restructure the routes to continuously rebalance.
Great. Okay. And again, forgive me, you, you may have brought this up already. But in terms of special education students. Who may be distance learning or students who have IEPs who are distance learning, struggling with that. Is there a plan right now to bring back? To have those very special needs regardless of grade level? Or is that something that we're still working on right now as far as along?
Yeah, right now, our life skills students and our preschool students, they were back in full. And, and the next phase would be also to take a look at the students, their IEPs and their needs. With the understanding that. If we were to say at a grade level be on a hybrid. That, that student coming back does break the stable pond. You know, because it's the, you know, the, the, the two different cohorts and we will have students that will straddle cohorts. But then again, we have to balance the individual need of the student with an IEP and what that IEP calls for. As well as the health and safety of everybody else. So. Yes, we, we've had that conversation to, to begin to identify those students with IEPs. That really should be back in full.
My last question, and then I have one quick, quick comment. How do we have a cutoff date for parents to elect distance learning? Or is this an ongoing option that parents will have moving forward throughout the rest of the pandemic, basically?
Yeah, you know. We, we had asked for a commitment and that, but that, to be honest, that commitment doesn't go in both directions. You know, if somebody needs to move into distance learning. Yes, because that, that, it, it, it sounds cruel, but it, it, it frees up space for. You know, the other students in the building and on the buses. And. Again, it, we did ask for a commitment for distance learning at the beginning of the year. So that we could build schedules so that we could figure our numbers and the movement of, of students and cafeteria spacing and. However. Situations change and some, and some families ask for their student to come back under the hybrid. Actually, a lot of, a lot of families were very comfortable with the hybrid and they changed their mind to go from distance learning. They say, yeah, hybrids go okay, because they're six feet apart. And, and the kids are seeing the, the other kids in person on the, on the Google meets. And so there were a lot of students that, I want to go back, I want to be.
Make you freezing up.
Yeah, me? That's impossible. Oh, no, my internet is unstable. I'm a.
Can't lend a library for that one?
No.
Sorry.
I think I'm back. I bet you my son is streaming, streaming a video game right now. So I don't know what I was saying, but I probably answered your question as brilliantly as you possibly imagined.
You exceeded expectations.
Thank you.
The, the biggest thing was, is I just want to make sure that we're not going to yank away distance learning from parents. Period.
No.
And then the comment I just want to make is to echo the, the really eloquent way that Ms. Mayo put it and Ms. Vada put it. You know. Full committee member, I think we always appreciate when folks reach out to us. But I worry that the, the dozens of copies of that same email that we received didn't quite have the impact that parents were hoping. Because it didn't have the message, didn't put, didn't put any message across really, except for. This is what we want. This is what we're going to get, or we'll sue you. I made the, I took the opportunity to call as many parents as I could. I, I called as many representatives from the school department as I could, including teachers, just to get a perspective on them. And, you know, I, it's, it's, it's true. Hybrid model is not ideal. We of course want all of our students back. Full time, in person, back to normal. This week showed, this week's already shown that, you know, our best intentions for that has consequences. And really, really, I can't support sending everybody back right now in person. And that was even before yesterday, but you know, I just want to let the whole district know that. As decisions like this are being made and talked about. These are very, very difficult decisions for everyone to consider. You as parents, your students, us as school committee members, teachers, district staff. This is incredibly, incredibly difficult, you know, but keep that, let's keep that dialogue open with each other. And, you know, try to be. Don't be afraid to reach out to us, I guess is what I'm saying on a personal level. You know, reach out to us via email, phone call, text message, Facebook, whatever. Let us know how your personal experience is working out. And, and let's see, you know, working together as a community. We're going to get there. We're going to get to where we need to be, but. And a little more collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, I'll be brief. One question for the superintendent and then two short comments. Superintendent, I just had a question about the three feet. It seems a little arbitrary to me that we're going from six feet, now they're saying three feet's okay. And my question is to you is. Did that three feet come from, I'm seriously, did, did Dr. Alexander Scott say that? Or did this come from the governor or did the Department of Health? I mean, who's actually, who gave us from six feet to three feet?
This was in, the Department of Ed had put out an FAQ. For school reopening and it was in that FAQ. And it, and again, it changed. It was, it was six feet optimal with the minimum of three, but then they took away the three. So there, there, there is no minimum spacing guide right now.
But this is from the Department of Ed, not the Department of Health, is what you're telling, is that I heard.
Well, it, it, it was developed in conjunction with the Department of Health.
Yeah, okay. You know, just as a side, you know, I write on this stuff. I mean, I was looking at a few books here. Flu nineteen eighteen, they're talking like twelve feet, you know, and I've got a bunch of other books I can cite for you. I'm not going to go that, but, and, and that's, some of that stuff is old news, but again, they're talking twelve feet, you know, it's safe. And that's again, that's some, what some people say, I think six feet's been working. It just seems to me this jump to three is a little arbitrary. And I understand what you're saying, Superintendent. I'm not criticizing you. I'm saying. I'm just surprised that's the Department of Ed telling us suddenly three feet or no feet is okay. I would at least expect that would come from Dr. Alexander Scott, who is the chief, you know, our chief medical officer and has been the lead on this, I believe.
Well, and, and these, these documents were, were developed in conjunction with the Department of Health. So pretty much the Department of Ed, Department of Health, what they published is jointly.
It means lock your name on it or not. Okay, I appreciate that. And the other thing I just wanted to mention was, I'm just going to reiterate, I did talk to some people, some administrative people in Massachusetts. I know some very high performing districts in Massachusetts are doing these dedicated virtual academies online. And there's different ways to do them. I think it's very hard for the teachers to do. I think it's hard to do both, and I'm going to just reiterate, the longer we do the hybrid, I, I think. A virtual, I'm going to come back to, I still think a virtual academy dedicated to online learning might be something to consider. And not just maybe for us, but a regional type of thing in conjunction with, I'm not going to name districts, but any of our, all of our neighboring districts, any of our neighboring districts. I think it's, you know, something for the people who want, for the people who want to be virtual, I think it's something we should at least revisit. And just my last point was, you know, a lot of our seniors lost a lot of their senior years, a special year. I know we want to bring the ninth, but we want to bring everybody back and I, I want to bring everybody back too. But I just wanted to mention that again, I hate to see, I know we all hate to see it. I don't want to see our seniors, this year's seniors lose out the way last year's seniors lost out. And again, we'll see what happens, but I think that should be something that we. Yeah, I don't know where to put in the level of priority. I just want to say I'd like to see that, you know, in the priority level as far as getting them back at least at some point. And that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything? Surest?
I, I just have a couple of small comments too. We here in North Smithfield have been leaders in working toward keeping all of our students and staff as safe as possible. I, I want that to continue. It included bringing our school buildings completely where they need to be from safety perspective. And as difficult as this is, I have to also agree that not having all children in school at this time is the safest thing for everybody. Both students and. Staff and I, I think we just have to listen to everything that's going on around us, listen to our administrators. And I know everyone is doing the best that they can and, and being the leaders that we are in the state, I think we're doing a great job. And as hard as it is not to have our kids in school, it's what's best for them right now.
Thank you. Any other school committee, committee members want to speak? But Superintendent, let me start by saying thank you. And thank you to the principals, administrators, teachers, and support staff. We could not have asked for anything else from you. You've all worked beyond your position. I also want to thank the parents for their patience. And congratulate the students for overcoming an almost impossible set of problems thrown at them. And that was without warning. I have to say, I'm very proud to be the chairman of such a well-run, professional, and caring district. And, and thank you. I, I just have some, I just want to make some comments in regards to. I know that there's been no change. If a parent wants to distant learn, they can, right? And, and for no reason, somebody doesn't want to send their kids to school, they can distance learn, correct?
Correct.
I know, and, and I know that this was raised a few times, and, and I know that you have so much on your plate. It's, 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 and, and it's not really, nor should it be on your plate. But I've heard of private organizations having kids come in. To distant learn from maybe a central location. We talked about, I know that we talked about maybe it would be the cafeteria, maybe it wouldn't be big enough. Maybe we would even take on too much responsibility, but I, I believe that there are other districts at least considering it. Something that I will look into and maybe bring some ideas to you. So it would be like an expansion of Kids Club or something to that effect. Where maybe we can do something with parents who absolutely have to work. Providing a safe and secure environment to them where they can distant learn from a, from a central location. And again, that's just an idea. And I guess if we want to, if we can now open it up, if no one has any further questions, let's open it up for comment. Okay. Ms. Ross? You're on mute. Thank you.
Good, yeah, I'm unmuted, right? Good evening, I have to say, oh, I'm slow.
Can you maybe, I know, you mind maybe shutting your picture off or maybe all of us?
Is that good? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I really, I, I, I'm at a loss for words. I'm so incredibly proud to be part of this school system and the leadership team and the school committee. I started my seventeenth year this year and I've never been so nervous to go back to school. I felt like I was a first-year teacher and I think we all felt that way. We spent our summer planning for all types of scenarios and we worked incredibly hard as a district to make sure we were prepared for whatever virtual responsibilities we had. We spent endless hours learning new applications, strategizing about how to meet our students' needs, and we are working hard. Is it perfect? No, but I'm glad to hear that so many of you understand the serious concerns we have about the health and safety of our students and our families. My girls are in this district because I, I, I don't want to sound like a dork, but I really bleed green and gold. I mean, I do love this community in town and they would love to be in school every day. But instead of focusing on the negatives, what I really stress with my family is all of the wonderful things that they've learned. And so as a family, we've learned how to better communicate with each other. I'm proud that my girls have learned how to persevere. They've learned, learned resilience, how to problem solve. And life isn't fair and we, it's a pandemic. Nobody wants this. And we all want to be back in school. What I wouldn't give to have my students in front of me every day. But I'm not willing to sacrifice my health or their health just for that rush. And I feel like eventually we'll get there. I really have faith we'll get there. And I know that the leadership and the school committee will work together to decide when that time is. And I just don't believe that time is now. And so I just encourage all of us to look at the positives and to really encourage our students to recognize the strengths they can really gain from this experience. How to become self-advocates and value the education they are receiving. So thank you very much. Again, you, you brought me to tears in many ways because I feel loved and I feel like my children are loved. And I just feel like this community is really doing its very best to help all of us get through a very difficult time. So thank you again.
Mr. Lombardi, would you like to have Mark LaBassier? Okay. Mark, can you unmute?
All right. Good evening. I come before you tonight as a resident of our town, a parent of children in our district, and a teacher at North Smithfield Elementary School. I am sure everyone at this virtual meeting can agree, we are in an unprecedented moment in our history. A time which all of our families have been forced to make decisions that I doubt any of us could have anticipated. When I look at our school system through the three lenses of resident, parent, and teacher. I can tell you that I have never been more proud to be a part of the North Smithfield Public Schools. Our teachers are working tirelessly to accomplish the task of educating our children in a manner that, until recently, no one had even thought possible. Sure, the idea of teaching online courses was there, but this is something completely different. Teaching in the time of COVID is like smashing two full, two full-time jobs into one. So that all students, healthy or sick, distance or in the classroom, have the ability to learn. I have watched teachers work tirelessly to learn new technical, technological systems till exhaustion. Take two minutes to cry due to the stress and lack of sleep and then put their glasses back on and start working again. Our teachers are working harder than ever because they want what is best for our kids. And I've also seen administrators work harder than I thought possible. They balance ever-changing regulations, make systemic plans on those regulations just to have them change a week later. My father was a CB in the Vietnam War. It was his job of his battalion to build bridges while coming under fire from all angles.
Hang on, Mark?
Mark, unmute yourself.
You just went on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I was saying that, did you hear the part about the administrators?
About how the superintendent is the, is, is absolutely wonderful? Yes, I heard that.
I'll back up just a little bit.
Thank you, okay, take it from there or repeat that piece.
I have also seen our administrators work harder than I ever thought possible. They balance ever-changing regulations, making systemic plans on those regulations just to have them change a week later. My father was a CB during the Vietnam War, and it was his job of his, it was the job of his battalion to build bridges while coming under fire, fire from all angles. Within weeks, a bridge his team built would inevitably be blown up. He would return to the same site a week later just to build the same bridge over and over again. Mark, he said, as he, as we watched one of the governor's press conferences, "The job of your administrators must feel frustratingly similar. Our administrative team has worked tirelessly to open our schools while remaining focused on the safety of our children and staff." Thus far, our leaders, teachers, support staff, maintenance crews and custodians have managed to plan and execute a hybrid of opening schools, a hybrid system of opening schools that has been nothing short of amazing. That does not mean that we should open the floodgates and move to full reopening. Other districts have other plans, but I have not heard of one that has functioned safer or better. It's been suggested by members of the community that we should open K to 12 now. It is my opinion that at this point, a full return to school without any support of responsible phase in period would be dangerous. We already have had one case of COVID-19 emerge in our schools, and we need more time to ensure that our community does not become a hotspot. A full return would increase exposure time to possible infection. And current literature suggests that more exposure increases the likelihood of illness as well as the severity of illness. A week ago, Providence College, who attempted full-on in-person classes, reported a single day, 80-person infection spike. It makes sense that this would happen.
Mark, you froze up.
Worth risking the safety of our children to push the envelope. I understand the desire for opening in full so that parents can return to work. I have also heard that sports group in town, sports groups in town may be pushing for this. I am a physical education teacher, so I certainly understand the value of athletics. But it is our responsibility to keep our students safe, just as much as it is our responsibility to educate them. We can do both by maintaining the hybrid model and having a responsible phase in period for full reopening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So Brian?
Excellent, thank you. I, I can't seem to show my camera, but maybe that doesn't matter. Does it matter?
No, thank you.
Oh, yeah, someone has stopped my camera. Okay. That's fine. So, so, so we can start it now. First of all, Mrs. Mayo, I love the, I totally love the reference to Teddy Roosevelt. Excellent, very well done, great history reference. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Natalie O'Brien. I live at 128 Old Great Road, and I am both a teacher and a parent in this district. I have two children. I have a child in third grade and a child in fifth grade.
Natalie, your, your camera is now on. I don't know what's happening with the controls, but I've been trying to turn people's camera on and unmute. Something is, is, is going strange here.
Okay, so I'm back on, so tell Steve Boss to reset my time, because I don't want to be cut off. Okay, so I was saying that I have two children in this district, and I really love the fact that there are 300 people in, on this call because I teach government, and this is what it's all about, right? Like you need to come, you need to hear the views, you need to make your own decision. So I think that's phenomenal. And I, I have to say that I understand where so many of you are coming from. This is very challenging. I have young kids who can't stay home alone. So I have had to like make accommodations and hire someone to come on days when I'm working. And, and it is incredibly difficult. Um, I also want to take my time to just applaud the administrative team. So you're all here wondering, how will this impact my family, my children, my life? And, and that's great, I completely get it. But I, I want to just say to people, say to parents that we are all here to do what's best for the whole. And, and I truly believe that I have worked closely with the administrative team, and it is about education and it is about safety, and it's about balancing both. And if any of my students are in on this meeting, we talk about it all the time. Like it's not easy to be a public official, because maybe what you want to do wasn't always popular. But we need to try to balance our kids getting an education as well as making sure that they are safe and families are safe, and that's incredibly important. And I feel like I can speak a little bit firsthand about the high school, so we're doing hybrid. And I have to say that I think it's going really well. Teachers have worked incredibly hard, that's been said before, so I don't want to be repetitive. We spent our summer preparing, fine tuning, doing everything that we could, and every day it gets better. And that means every day it gets better for the education of the students in our district. And they're also learning to advocate, because sometimes a kid gets thrown out of my meet, and then I love the email I get afterwards about, hey, what did I miss? What did I, like, what do I have to do? And, and that's incredibly important. On Monday, I asked two of my classes to fill out a survey about how they thought distance learning was going. And I said, so what are your thoughts? How can it get better? And, and it was overwhelmingly positive. Of course, it's not perfect. We are in a pandemic. But the kids said, oh, I'm learning, I'm understanding things, I feel connected. They gave me a little bit of advice, I'm trying. So I just have to say, I can't speak for every building, but the hybrid at the high school is working very well. And I, I just don't think a, a switch at this time would be best. We don't have stable pods, as was previously mentioned. So I think if kids are safe and kids are learning and they feel connected and involved in what they're doing, then I think we're doing really well with the balance, because that's what it's about, safety and education. So I, I just, I, I'm happy with what's going on at the high school. I know that there are concerns about sports and other things, and of course, I understand where you're coming from. But, but there is somehow in my mind, a bigger picture. And I just want to say to the middle school administration and the elementary school, man, it is not easy. And my kids are learning and, you know, they feel appreciated. And in 2020, when there's no good news, that seems like pretty good news. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Dennis Nary's iPhone. So if it's Dennis Nary, great, if not, please identify yourself.
Yeah, it's made sense near. Listen, I just, I want to say, like, I've had, I've heard a lot of the teachers speaking and administrators. That's, that's pretty much all we've heard so far. None of the parents have been allowed to speak. And I, I understand where a lot of you are coming from. However, as, as a parent only and not a teacher in this town, I love this town, I love the school system, that's why we moved here, that's why we built the house here. Did we expect any of this to happen? No, I don't think any of us did. But I, I think from the beginning of this, and not just with schooling, I think a lot of us are just tired of everyone else telling us what's best for our kids and what's best for us and what's best for our families. There are a lot of kids that, that this distance learning, this hybrid, whatever it is, it, it just doesn't work for them. And I'm, I'm sure that most of you as teachers know that there's a good portion of the kids that go to school that, that can't learn effectively with this hybrid learning and, and distance learning. It just doesn't work for them. There are a lot of kids like that. But I, I'm, I'm fortunate that, that, you know, I, I have two good kids and two good students. But, but even my kids are, are expressing to me that, you know, they, they, they're not learning the, the way they would if they were in person. So, I mean, I, I, do, do, do people think that it's, that this is going to go away? It's not going to go away. This, this COVID is not going away. It's, it's going to stay around for a while. And my question would be, what's the end game? Because even with this hybrid model, you're, you're going to get cases of COVID. Like you're, there, there's going to be cases of them. But it's not, it, it's almost, it, it, it almost seems like, you know, a, a positive, a positive test in everyone's mind is like a death sentence. And that's not the case. It, it, the, the, the statistics don't prove that. And for the kids especially, in, in their age group, it, they're, they're barely affected. So we're talking about, you know, the, the, the safety of the children is, is the top priority. I would say that there's, oh, there are a lot of things that for a lot of these kids are much more dangerous than COVID. You know, depression. And depression leads to suicide and anxiety and, and all these other things. I mean, you're all wonderful teachers, but you are not mental health specialists. And to say that, you know, staying home and continuing this distance learning is what's best for the kids, you can't say that because you are not mental health professionals and you, you can't make those statements. Because although that might be the case for some of these kids, it's certainly not the case for all of them. And these kids are not getting the education and the, the experience that they should be getting with high school and, and middle school and all these different age groups because of COVID-19, that it, it's not going to go away. And I'll tell you, i- i- if the plan, if the end game is, let's just do this distance learning until there's a vaccine. And I've, I've heard that said, you know, once the vaccine comes out, then things will start changing. I'm not getting a vaccine that's, that's being pushed out in a month, and I'm certainly not going to have my kids get it. So we need to start coming up with other plans. And one of those plans is not going to be having these kids doing distance learning for the whole year. Because like I said, these cases are going to pop up regardless of whether you're in a hybrid, if you're in a this learning, they're going to happen anyway. It's not going away. So I was one of the ones who sent that letter. If I had the time to sit down and put, put my own words to it, a lot of them would have been very similar. Maybe it wouldn't have been exact. So for those of you who said, you know, it was just a copy and paste, yes, it was. But it was a lot of what was represented in that letter are the, the feelings that a lot of us have. I would also say that if there are that many people that feel the opposite way, then that's their decision too. If they want to keep their kids home from school, then let them do it. And that should create availability for the kids that want to go to school full-time. It should create the room in school. If, if there's that many people that don't want to send their kids, as there are that do want to send their kids, then, then there shouldn't be any problem at all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nary. I apologize if, if I'm going out of order when people signed up, but I see Ms. Greer.
You ready for me?
Yeah, we are, yeah.
All right, I'm having some delay issues, so I'm keeping my video off. But I thank all of our educators, administrators, district staff, like all, all of you. I'll stop by saying that I don't think it's a perfect solution or even an ideal solution to any of this. I want our seniors to have their senior year. I want our band and chorus and sports to be fully functioning at set. And understanding what younger kiddos and their parents can handle, I'm wondering if there's been any discussion regarding keeping seven through 12 grades fully distant and distributing K through six throughout the three schools.
Superintendent? That's actually was one of the models that the Department of Ed floated back at the beginning over the summer. And one of the things that we all felt very strongly about is that we didn't want to sacrifice any, any one grade level for the others. We felt that, you know, having all students back, at least to start with, at least the two days a week to have that in, you know, in-person connection and what was important. Now, you know, some districts have, have done full distance learning, but they, they're doing it because their, their facilities aren't up to, up, up to spec as far as air circulation. So yes, we actually did talk about that. There was one point before the Department of Ed said, we need three plans. It was, there was a plan for.
That was never any of the, the plans that was distributed to us.
No, no, it, this, this was prior to that, because the original conversation at the beginning of the summer was to be, look, all priority is going to be K to five. Everybody else can be distance learning.
Right, so that's why I'm saying that.
Yeah, and, and they recommended, you know, use your other facilities, move everybody around. But then the, the guidance changed, and it wasn't about just focus on K to five. It was also to get all the other grade levels in. So, yeah, we, we actually did have that conversation.
Right, I understand that, but you also are saying that you want parents to be able to go back to work, so.
Correct, but, but we also did not want to relegate entire grade levels to just doing distance learning and that's it.
I mean, I understand that, like, I also hope that, like, as time goes on, we get different guidelines and we're able to, to, to open everyone all the time. But, you know, you say that you want K through five in school or K through six in school, but then, then you say you don't want to mitigate other, other grades. So I'm just a little confused about that.
Our priority will be K through five, you know, to the best of our ability. We want to bring them all back and in full, and as I said.
I agree too, yeah. I'm an educator myself, like, it's, it's not, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I just also need to work myself, and I know there are a lot of other parents that need to as well. And, and the, the ability for a child, like, we were saying, K and one have to go back to school because they, they can't handle being in front of a computer all day. My second grader also can't handle that, and I have to hire someone to, to take care of him all day while I teach, you know? So it, at, at least a seven, eight, nine, like, any of those kids, at least they, at least they can learn. But my child in second grade can't.
And believe me, I, I don't want to debate you on this. You know, we, we, we do want everybody in. And, but what, what we're recommending is, is that we just don't turn on the faucet all at once. We phase it in, we, we, the recommendation.
I'm not, I'm not recommending that either.
The, the, the recommendation is, is K and one. And then we continue on and we assess and we, we look at, we then do two, three and four, and get our way up to five. You know, what, what, what I'm going to be asking the school committee is that we, we start with a return for a K and one, and that we reconvene in a week or two to look at the options and the possibilities of, of, of extending that, and to go on to two and three. And like I said earlier, my, my, my big concern with two is that that is our largest in-person group at the elementary level.
I understand that.
Those class sizes will be the largest. And, you know, three and four would actually be easier because of the amount of parents that are, have chosen the full distance learning.
But also, I would say that my child has two full-time teachers in his classroom. My time is over. Okay.
Thank you. Is it Ms. McWilliams? Claire McWilliams?
Yes, yes, it's Dr. Williams. I'm a teacher in North Smithfield, at North Smithfield Elementary School. I've been in the district, this is my 17th year. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. At the present time, I am. I am out on an FMLA leave uh because I am in a high-risk category and I'm also sixty-seven years old. Unfortunately, I'm unable to suddenly retire uh due to our pension reforms and the fact that I started in the system later in life. Uh, so I need to work and I really do want to work. I love my students. Um, and I miss them very much. And the emotion that Mr. St. Jean uh was overcome with earlier, uh, I I could feel it through the screen. Um, I've I've been emotional, it's been an emotional roller coaster uh since this all started. But I cannot go back into a building where I will be in contact not with just one class at NSES, but with over a hundred and twenty-five students and all of the teachers and the teacher aides and specialists that are in those classrooms with them each and every day. And over the course of fifteen weeks, I will be exposed to every single person in that building. Whether you think it's a close contact or not, it's still contact. And for someone my age, that's extremely scary. I didn't go to a grocery store until uh, I think it was maybe June or July. I had all my groceries delivered. I I have been pretty much self-quarantined since March. Some of my colleagues, and I I I want to uh I I'm going to speak now about something that um Mr. Cornell brought up. Um, some of my colleagues have expressed uh to me their frustrations with um juggling at-home learners and in-person classes at the same time. And I in my, I mean, I've been in education for a long time and I've been in two states, five different school districts, and I've seen just about everything. And I do, I truly do not believe that this model of synchronous learning will be uh sustainable over the long term. It's too stressful for the for the kids, for the parents, and especially the teachers. So I would like for our administration and our school committee to consider our older teachers, those with compromised health conditions, and faculty members who may have family members in their home that fit in those categories and utilize us for teaching and supporting the in-person teachers with their at-home learners. I have, we all have, all of us have a a a plethora of experience and things that we can do and offer uh that that could help out everyone. Personally, I am willing to fulfill whatever need my district has. I want to work. I really, really do want to work. I don't want to sit at home doing nothing. I just ask that you allow me to do it from home, to work from home. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McWilliams.
So, Mr. Lombardi, do you want me to go through the thing? I have all of them unlocked so that they have to be unlocked to be able to talk. Do you want to go release them and just say who it is to make your life easier?
Um, if you want to um go through each one, yeah, if you want to say it, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Boss, unlock them. Um, we, they can talk for three minutes and then, um, you know, obviously, we don't have to cut them off, but maybe you can just ask them to um uh, just let them know anyway.
Next person is Melissa Custer. Melissa, you should be unlocked.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm glad that um North Smithfield's rethinking some of the things. I'm also a fellow educator in another district and we've had some difficulties with trying to figure out lunches and how to get the kids to be able to interact with each other being six feet away. And it's it's really difficult to take the time to figure out how to make it safe for the kids to come back, how to make it safe for the teachers to be back, and how to um ensure that everybody is is, you know, safe from from being in too big of groups. Um, I would love to see a full return to school. It's it's the ideal thing, but I think that what the hybrid model, I'm struggling to find childcare for myself. I have to use my parents who are compromised in themselves with their immunity level. And so I think that it's hard for everyone. We're all working parents and unfortunately, no one thought a pandemic was going to come along and and change everything and change the way our world is. Um, I know that these decisions are completely difficult for you to make, that you're not making them, Mr. St. Jean, on your own, that this is a a school committee decision, it's a state decision, you know, that you're consulting everybody, that's possible. I know that you do consult mental health providers and anybody that would help you with all of that information, and I just wanted to voice my support for all the teachers and for the school committee and the superintendent in whatever decisions you make, because they're not easy decisions. Thank you.
Next is L. DeRigan, iPhone.
Hi, this is Lauren DeRigan, the parent of a middle schooler. And I just want to know, maybe more on a positive note, what what would have to happen for us to consider going back full-time? What would that look like? That's it.
Superintendent, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure if there was something beyond what myself and um the assistant principal at the middle school had hadn't covered. Uh, is there something specific uh you would like to know?
So, may I, may I just, maybe I can ask the question, Superintendent? So, um, the plan right now is to open up K and one.
Yeah, correct. Correct.
And you will reevaluate and keep moving along as you reevaluate. Is that what I understand it to be?
Correct. Um, in in at the middle school, the the priority would be grades five and six. So as we open up um elementary grades, uh, we would be also targeting uh grade five and then grade six. Seven and eight, again, we're we're it it's a larger transportation cafeteria um i- and and rescheduling the building if we're to um maintain the stable pods. The the seventh, seventh, eighth grade is kind of on a more of a high school type of schedule, and this is typical of, you know, all middle schools. Five and six are are easier to contain and keep within stable groups, um, just just like the elementary. Uh, but then it becomes just, it it really is just an issue of class sizes and distancing. And again, as as I said before, uh, you know, oh, we check all the boxes. You know, it's the um, all the metrics we we meet, it's just the practicality and of of the opening uh that we're we're working out.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Next per- person is Beth Beechy. Beth, you you should be unlocked.
Okay, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am a mother of a senior. So this is her last year in school. She's been through the school system completely. She started out this year being very skeptical of going. Now, she's the she's a good student, but she has a lot of anxiety. She came home the first day of school and said, Mom, they got it. They're doing good. I just want you to, guys, to know that. The kids think you're doing a pretty good job. Me personally, I would love to have her have her senior year, be with the kids she grew up with and has been in school with since preschool or kindergarten. She misses them, but the way you guys have it set up now, keeping everybody healthy as healthy as can be, she still gets to see her friends, talk to her friends, and where she's assigned at seating and lunch, she's okay with that. I asked her earlier, what do you think should happen? She said, keep this up until everybody can, we can figure out how to be healthy. Yes, I want my senior year. I want to do the big graduation. I want to do my prom. We, I won't get my last homecoming. I won't get my, you know, won't get all that stuff. But she wants everybody to be healthy. Now, with her, they won't get to take SATs because they canceled them. So she's going in, or a lot of her schools are now test optional that she wants to apply to. These are the things the kids are missing that I get, that people want their kids to be in school because of this. But I personally think you guys are doing a great job. My child, who just turned eighteen, thinks you guys are doing a great job because of her anxiety, and you made her feel comfortable. So I just want to say thanks.
Well, th- thank you, Beth. Um, uh, Mr. McGee, uh, or Mr. Boss, I'm not aware that SATs were canceled. I thought that was uh that we were scheduling a a a a special day for that.
Actually, all seniors are taking SATs on October fourteenth.
Oh, I didn't know that. Nobody told us that. I didn't get an email or anything.
Well, we're we're, we are in the process, all seniors, all the juniors from last year who are seniors are taking it on October fourteenth.
Oh, wait a minute. I just got the, oh, Mom, I forgot to tell you.
Ah, yeah, we've all been there.
That completely escaped my mind that that was gonna happen soon. I'm sorry. I forgot to mention it to my mom. I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, all right, now that's my life. But I just want to thank you. She was scheduled go going in. She was nervous. Um, but everybody calmed their nerves and it's working. I mean, yeah, she's not getting her senior year. But, I mean, I like the hybrid. I I know everybody would rather be in school. And like, like you said, you know, they want to be together their last year. You know, that's all I got to say is, you guys are doing great. I don't know if they tell you enough. You just are and.
Mr. Boss, was it three minutes up?
Oh, she just froze. I don't know what happened.
I'm kidding.
The next person that is up.
Parent, contact me. She heard my testimony.
Hello, thank, thank you.
Be unmuted. There's there's no name for the next one. It just says owner. Owner, are you there?
Uh, I'm, think that's me. This is William Reyes. Um, I just want to say thank you, everybody, for the amazing work you guys are doing uh as educators. I am truly grateful for the amazing work you guys are doing. And I am a father of three, uh, one in the middle school and two in high school. Um, I am definitely uh believe that in full support of my kids going back to full classes. Um, I've seen my kids uh definitely suffer a lot, especially my boys, through this process of not having a structure. It's amazing to see how much you as educators are providing and now that we don't have it. So I applaud you for that and I'm really grateful for that. Uh, but it's definitely in my heart to make sure that um we go back into a full. Uh, as you guys have said, we definitely are going in that direction. I guess my question is, is there a specific timeline that you guys have that you are going to reassess the situation? Is there, uh, are you gonna come back two weeks later and sit down and reassess? Is there's gonna be a month from now that you're gonna reassess? Is it two months that you're gonna reassess? What's the timeline in order for us to feel like, okay, you know, a- as much as a pain it was to hear, uh, you know, Ms. Remondo saying, okay, it's gonna be September fourteenth and then the twenty-eighth and, you know, we kind of went on on that. But at least we had a timeline. Is there a timeline that you guys are considering that perhaps might help us to ease our uh angst as to when we can see our kids go back to full in class?
We actually have six different timelines and I was in in various scenarios. Um, uh, wh- where I stand right now, I I just want to make the recommendation for K and one and then reassess on a weekly, bi-weekly basis, whether it's, uh, you know, uh, standing school committee meetings, uh, just to touch base every couple of weeks. Uh, my my hesitancy on putting together a full timeline, and again, we 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 had so many different variations of grade level combinations and coming in, is that the the concern is that right now, everything is just so tentative because we don't know from week to week, you know, what the situation will be. And if we were to put dates on a spreadsheet and say, this is it, this is when you can expect it, you know, we we may not be able to uphold the, you know, that timeline. But I also get it, you know, from from a parent's standpoint, that you need to make plans, you need to book people, you need to make arrangements. And having this 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 situation to be so fluid is 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 painful for all of us right now. Uh, but at this stage, a- again, with so so many things that are being uncertain, I I would like to um ask the school committee to be meeting bi-weekly uh with um and and give them uh ongoing updates as to uh the assessment, how things are doing as new grade levels come in, how it's handling transportation cafeteria, and just keep trying to add grade levels to the point where we're back.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. So Superintendent will 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 call meetings um at least in the near future every few weeks?
I I I would like that. I would recommend that.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
The next person is Amy Wright. Amy Wright, you should be able to talk. Amy Wright?
Hey, everyone. Um, my name is Amy Wright and I'm here as a North Smithfield resident educator and as the president of the North Smithfield Teachers Association. As you re- as you consider reopening plans for our schools, the educators of North Smithfield find that is incumbent upon us to share our professional concerns with the school committee. As the professionals in our school building with our students, we overwhelmingly support the maintenance of the hybrid model. First and foremost, our teachers would like nothing more than to return to the classroom with our students in a normal fashion. We love kids. We want to be with the kids and that's why we became educators. We're also very aware of the difficulties that the current hybrid system presents. The challenges of instructing our students in person and virtually simultaneously is very time-consuming, complex, and quite frankly, it's exhausting. However, at the same time, we're also acutely aware of the risk that it poses to our students and faculty if we should move too quickly to a full return to school. And so it is despite these daily challenges that our teachers willingly take on the hybrid model because they know that this is what is safest for our students and staff. To change models swiftly would not be prudent. We're only now entering the phase in which we will begin to see the ramifications of our school return, as is evidenced by the positive covid case identified yesterday. Time is a necessary component of gauging the safety of our models. There are no shortcuts that lead to a safe return. Yes, we've put many safety measures in place to increase the safety of our students and our teachers, but they're not perfect. We must acknowledge that some people come to school not feeling well. Some people don't want to be tested. Some people ignore travel restrictions. It's just the nature of the world that we live in. The school district does not control what people do outside of school and so it is incumbent upon you to be extra vigilant in order to mitigate the risk for all of our students and staff. In addition, our stable pods aren't always quite so stable. Students are coming off of buses with other children, for example, and the high school doesn't even have a semblance of stable pods. In the middle school, each grade eats lunch together. That would be over a hundred students. That would be in our cafeteria, maskless with no dividers. Consider the difficult. Consider the difficulty of effectively disinfecting the entire cafeteria between lunches. Our itinerant teachers such as R and P would see more than a hundred students a day in a full return. How does our art teacher properly disinfect the materials for her class of twenty five or more and disinfect all of the tables in her room? And prepare for her next class with both distance and in-person learners because we will still have both models of instruction in sixty seconds. For some teachers, this is just too much and they will be seeking leaves, which will be, which will compound staffing shortages as people are sick and or quarantined. Under a full return, students would not be able to be socially distant. I understand that the ever changing guidelines stipulate that while six feet or more is optimal, there's no minimum distance required. Let's all recognize that these guidelines were written in a way so that the governor is not responsible for keeping kids out of school. You have been set up to have that responsibility of determining what is best for our district. Can you bring us back? Yes. Should you bring us back is the question that you need to ask and very carefully consider. Just because you can make that decision doesn't mean that it's the right decision. Bringing students back to sit literally right next to each other in many of our rooms is not safe. Remember the fifteen person limit on gatherings, but yet we're discussing returning about five hundred or more students to each of our schools. And I hope that we all recognize the ridiculousness of holding a Zoom meeting while discussing essentially doubling the student population in our millions. We're entering flu season, sports are taking place, the weather is turning colder, we'll all be spending more time indoors with windows closed. Numbers are headed in the wrong direction. Hospitalizations have increased by more than forty percent over the low in the past thirty days and other metrics are up as well. Our rating has changed Rhode Island to at risk for outbreak. And quite frankly, we have not given this model time enough to gauge its efficacy in preventing the spread of COVID nineteen. It would be short sighted to barge ahead. Implications of such a decision are extremely serious, perhaps even life or death. North Smithfield is not immune to COVID nineteen. Israel is an example of what happens when you let your guard down and is a cautionary tale for those of us who listen. Their numbers for transmission were very low. They were desperate to get their economy going. Sound familiar? A few weeks later, they faced an overwhelming increase in cases that crippled their educational system. I don't think this is the path that we want to choose. Instead, we must learn from their mistakes. Their message, even when transmission is low, strict precautions are vital. Smaller class sizes, mask wearing, keeping students six feet apart and providing adequate ventilation. Are critical and this is our hybrid plan. The teachers of North Smithfield employ you to maintain the current hybrid model. Any plan to bring students back must prioritize our early childhood students. It must be carefully considered and it must be slowly and cautiously carried out in a way that allows for sufficient time to monitor implications of changes. And it must be continually assessed and adjusted in response to the evolving nature of our circumstances in and out of school. We must get this right. We cannot afford to get it wrong. The costs are just too high. Every decision that we choose to make either increases or decreases the risk to every student and educator and their families. I'm so grateful to hear the school committee erring on the side of caution. Um, I think that we can agree that safety is our number one priority. Because the health and safety of our entire school community rests in your hands. We employ you to continue employing a high degree of caution as we move forward throughout the year. And I'd just like to end on a personal note. I'm just so thankful to all the members of this community. From my dedicated colleagues to the administrators who are working tirelessly. To the school committee that has been open and really listening to all of the stakeholders that are involved. And to our supportive parents who have been amazing. It's just. You're a dedicated group of people and there's no other district that I would rather be a part of during this uniquely challenging time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Vincent. Mr. Vincent.
Uh, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, just want to thank the committee for time to speak. I'm going to keep this really short. So seventeen years in the town. Uh, very happy with the work done thus far. I actually feel like the North Smithfield school system is among the leaders in the state. Uh, I really don't want to waste a lot of time bringing up all the same points, but I just want to say that I have two children in the system. I would like to keep them in the hybrid model. Uh, we believe it gives us the best risk versus reward balance. And we're sure you're going to reevaluate things as things change and if it needs to change, you'll make the decision to change, right? Um, but I do have one question at the end here and that is, um, I'm sure there's a lot of people on here that are trying to support the athletics, the basketball in particular. Um, and I just like to understand why we can't use the gyms within the hybrid model for outside athletics, you know, especially basketball. That's all I have. If you can answer that question, that'd be great.
So right now, I mean, athletics is running in, in, in kind of a, their own pseudo hybrid version of it. We have very strict guidelines under the interscholastic league. As far as practice and use and, and, and how the facilities are to be used. So. One of the things that we, we've had to do, and I don't know if Matt, Mr. Tuck is on board. Is be very. Aware of public use of facilities during the school day and after school during the practices. And on the weekends when, when games have been. Games have been set. There's limits in crowds, there's limits in participation. There's cleaning requirements that we have to have in our outdoor facilities as we move from. Uh, one, one event to the other, one practice to the other. So as a result, um, our, our facilities have had to be. Under reduced use during the day, immediately after school, during practices. And in on the weekends when games are, are, are planned. However, on, on the times in which, uh, we don't have students on the field and we don't. Have, have. You know, high school games going on, you know, the facilities, we do want to open it up for community use, although. Again, just like everything, all the time and the amount of people who can use things are just severely limited at this stage.
Thank you.
Next person is Vivian. Vivian, if you could unlock yourself.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm the mother of a kindergartner. Um, we're currently doing the distance learning model with her. So I understand next week that they're being brought back full time. Um, my concern is, I guess, just since she isn't the distance learning model about that being adequately maintained. If the teacher has most of her kids in class now, it doesn't have to log in, you know, those kids who are doing their remote learning. Are there any plans to have dedicated teachers just to distance learning?
Jen, would you like to address?
Sure. At, at this time, we are not going to. She would stay in whatever grade and whatever classroom she is. The expectation is that we would maintain those Monday distance learning days. To kind of keep that rhythm going and in the event that we ever had to kind of resort back to full at-home learning. So nothing would change for her. Um, and I would have to say that there is a possibility that. We could see a few other kids join, um, a full-time at-home learning. So nothing will change for her.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the things that I'll just add is that we had very much considered. Carving off on each grade level, a full-time distance learning teacher. So that we would have in a grade level of five, you know, with five teachers, we would have four in person and then one distance learning. Except when you look at the numbers and schedules, say if there's twenty-five of the students are in distance learning. That means that the four teachers who are in, in school. Uh, have twenty-five students on their roster. And, you know, we wouldn't be able to. Bring in as many students. And the other thing is that we. And this is horrible, but we anticipate that at any time, any class on any grade level can, will have to switch over to distance learning. And what we didn't want is to have, say, four classrooms of all in-person students. Suddenly have to go distant learning and then, oh my God, how do I do this? What do I do? I'm not used to this. I haven't practiced it. Versus all five teachers are mixed in-person plus distance learning. So they have all the skills, they have the technology. Um, and then if, if God forbid, you know, one great, one class has to go into quarantine. They can just pick up and continue because they're all, um, used to it. They, they all have the, uh, the protocols and procedures down. So we, we really did this out of flexibility to reduce numbers in classrooms and to give us the ability to move in and out of quarantine. And still maintain, um, instruction.
Thank you.
Next is Heather Cardone. Heather Cardone, you are all set.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, I'm also an educator and a longtime resident of North Smithfield. I'm not gonna. Reinvent the wheel here. I'm going to piggyback on what Dennis Neary had said previously about COVID and go for an air. Not to take much. Um, also as an educator, equitability is the big phrase going through all this. I know in my school system, the way we look at it and manage COVID and all dealings and. Distance learned in persons, we have to be equitable. So my. My point is if we were being equitable about this and we gave parents the option to have their students be full virtual. Then we should also be equitable and give parents the option to have their students be full in person. And that's just my point.
Thank you.
Darlene Corey, you are up. Darling, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to keep my, um, screen off because I'm having some bandwidth problems. So, uh, my name is Darlene Corey. I'm a resident of town. I have two children. One is in high school and one just graduated last year and he's now in college. I'm also an educator, a public school educator in Rhode Island. And I also am the local site coordinator for my district's union, which I bring that up. Because I get to sit in on a lot of meetings with leadership. And hear about the other communities and how things are unfolding. And I just have to say, I think North Smithfield is doing a fantastic job. The safety plan. Has been great, the organization, the protocols, the PD, the follow-up and follow-through, I think has been really. Reassuring in this unsettled time and really highly commendable. And I think the content, my, my daughter's at the high school. The content delivery has been really great. Just like Ms. O'Brien said, they're, they're calling it dual teaching where the teacher is doing distance learning kids and teaching at the same time the students that are in front of them. In front of them, um, has been exemplar probably for the state. So I think, um, it's been a very. Uh, high level of, um, professional development that has allowed it to be such a success. I, I do agree with Heather and Dennis Neary and with the social emotional piece. Um, should not be ignored for any age, the isolation, screen time, lack of interaction. And like I said. I had a senior last year, so I can fully empathize with that mom that has a senior. Um, I do think that it's not an ideal situation and, um, you know, it is. Probably from the moms and community members that I talked to, that the hybrid at this point. Is the most manageable plan under these circumstances, but should be revisited often. Because the ultimate goal is to get the students back in full time. However. The safety really needs to be the highest priority and I think that, that, um. Hybrid model is working at this time under the circumstances, considering the safety of the students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next person up is Gutierrez. It doesn't have a first name, so Gutierrez, you should be unlocked.
Hi, it's Julia Gutierrez.
Virginia.
Okay, um, so I know that everybody's situation is different and, um, this is gonna sound repetitive. Um, I know that the district, uh, cannot accommodate everyone's needs. Um, but from my experience from March to now. Um, I almost lost my mind trying to keep up with the three kids that I have. And trying to follow their schedule and, um, completing their work. And. I am, I don't think there's enough words to express our gratitude for what the district has done. Everybody involved, administrative, custodians. Um, just teachers and parents as well. And with us staying positive, I think that this is just gonna make. The transition from hybrid to full in much better. Um, but I just wanted to say that, again, back in March, I almost lost my mind trying to keep up with the scheduling. And the work that the kids needed to complete for school versus now. Um, where they're scheduled, they're following. Um, I have three, I have three kids and they have different ways of learning. And they have, with the teacher's assistance and just the way that everything has been set up. It has been unbelievable, the amount of work that they've been able to complete and the success that they've had. Um, through this transition. So I just want to say that we are extremely grateful. Um, and blessed to be in this district. Uh, we have many family members around the state in different districts and. Um, what Darlene said is, is true. It's impeccable, the amount of work that they've put in and. The way that they have made this a success for our kids and for us parents who are home. Um, having to, uh, follow up with our kids. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. Um, teachers, administrative, and again, anyone involved with this change.
Thank you.
Next person is Matt Tech. Um, I know that there was a question about athletics, so Mr. Tech, you're up.
Uh, thank you. So I did get, uh, I was listening in on some of the conversation. I just couldn't unmute myself. Quick enough to help answer that, but, uh, obviously we are, some of the parents have indicated, uh, and educators have indicated as well too. We're in kind of a. New mode of athletics and, uh, we are kind of unpacking that and going. With guidance from the surrounding scholastic league, but also the Department of Health and our school department. Um, the only sports that were cleared to go right now are outdoor sports. Um, they have basically indicated that right now. Uh, that was the reason why girls volleyball was pushed off into the, uh, springtime at the moment is that they do not want. The indoor use of buildings being utilized right now. And, uh, that would apply and reach out to obviously town usage as well too, for example, basketball. Uh, which is primarily a winter sport, but right now it's just simply been moved to a moderate risk. Sport category and currently the Department of Health and in the scholastic league are working on guidelines as to what would be. Modifications and how would basketball look like? So. We don't even have definitive, uh, answers yet as to how that would look and what the requirements will be. And what that would require from a facility standpoint as well too. So. Um, definitely we understand that there is a need to want to get the kids involved and move in and get them. In the social aspects of sports and how that will help them with their mental health. Uh, we also want to do this very safely. Um, because obviously if we don't proceed with caution here, uh, we are one, uh, situation, bad choice. Bad decision or bad luck away from having our sports program being mightily impacted if there was to be a case. Uh, that would quarantine a team down for fourteen days. Um, and obviously rosters would be greatly impacted by that. So. We are, uh, kind of walking on eggshells here with the fall sports as far as trying to make sure we do it the right way. Uh, and do it correctly and do it safely because we do want. Our kids being active in athletics and I think we're going to do the best that we can, but. Um, we don't, we can't get that far head down the road with the indoor sports yet and things of that until we can get through. Uh, what we're currently facing with our outdoor sports right now.
Thank you, Mr. Tech.
Next person is Jason. Jason, you should be unlocked and go ahead. Jason, are you there? All right, I'm gonna go to the next person. Lisa Carter. Lisa Carter, you should be available. Jason, we'll come back to you.
Thank you. Um, I'm the mother of a high schooler and I just want to say I'm, I've been really impressed with the hybrid model. Um, and just big shout out to the health professionals that have been working with the schools. Um, I know that that's been a huge amount of work on them as well. Um, the question that I have and kind of the, the point that I have is, um. You know, you had mentioned that one of the, the, um. Criteria is that the state has to be in phase three reopening and I'm curious what's gonna happen if the. If the state has to go back to phase two, if we get another surge. Will we be able to continue in the hybrid model? Or are we gonna have to go back to full remote learning at that point and sort of? And sort of part of my point is that I think one of the things that parents need and kids need is as much consistency as we can have in this kind of, like, there's so much that, so much that's unknown. And so if we were to rush into a full reopening and then have the rates go up and then we have to go back to the hybrid or, or even worse, have to go back to full remote, that that would be just as disruptive, if not more disruptive for these, for those of us who are having to sort of change our work schedules around and stuff to accommodate it. So I think that the hybrid model, if whatever we can do to not move too quickly and be able to keep what we've got and without bouncing back and forth a lot between all of the, you know, going as, as full in as we possibly can, as quickly as we can, which then we could end up bouncing back to something worse and losing ground. I think that that, that consistency is really, is really key. And this is one of the reasons that I definitely favor staying with the hybrid and doing this gradual step, stepwise approach that you guys have been advocating. But so the question is, do, what would happen if we go, if the state goes back to phase two?
Well, ultimately, we take our directions from, from the, as far as this, from, from the state and the Department of Health. And we're just hoping that we're going to be able to hold everything together for as long as possible that we, and again, this, this, this is why I was hesitant on putting actual dates on things because we have to keep ourselves flexible. I'm hoping to ride this out as long as we possibly can. And if the state does do a backslide and, or the community does, I mean, we, we will just have to respond accordingly. But we're hoping to avoid that backslide and be able to keep moving forward or at least maintaining.
Could we maintain the hybrid model if the state goes to phase two? Or would we have to go, would the state, does the state have, have rules about that?
I'm sure they, there will be some flexibility due to community infection and, and things like that. So, you know, honestly, a Providence and Pawtucket and Central Falls when socket will be hit harder possibly than a, than a North Smithfield, you know. So we, we, I'm hoping we, we can just, not, not, you know, not just weather out any storm, but thrive along the way.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking is that even if things, even if we get an uptick in the state, this hybrid model that you've got going is really good and that we main, we could maintain, you know, the six feet of distance and have really safe air exchanges and be in pretty good shape to maybe even continue the hybrid model when other systems in the state aren't able to, to have any in-person. So I, I like sticking with what you're doing.
Thank you.
Next up is Kristen Bradshaw. Kristen, you should be all set to go. Whoops.
Hello. So I just really just wanted to say that, so I am a mom of a second grader and a kindergartner. And my girls are doing full distance learner, learning right now. And I just wanted to praise North Smithfield Elementary for making it so much easier this time than in March. And I, I truly appreciate all the hard work, cause I know how hard you are working. And I appreciate too, that you guys did not go down the route of a virtual learning academy. I think that would have been really much more difficult for students to not feel that they're not really a part of their community. They would be with people they don't know and teachers they don't know and feel even more isolated than we already are in this type of situation. And, and I do have to say that I think as parents, you know, our tensions are high, we're stressed, you know, we're, we're being asked to do things that are just not supposed to be right now. But I think we really need to make sure that we are working with the teachers and making sure that we are a team, right? Like, we just need to be a team and not pick on little things and not, you know, oh, they're freezing or find all the negative. We need to really find all the positive. And we also need to think of our students, their health, their wellbeing. But we also, we gotta remember about our teachers. You know, the teacher doesn't leave at three o'clock and then that's it. Like, they're going home. They're staying up till midnight so that they can get all this work done for their hybrid students, for the distance learners. What if there's a quarantine? I have to make sure I have all these. We have to, we have to be a team and we need to root each other on. And that's all I really wanted to say is that I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. I think we just all need to be a team and do the best for our teachers, our staff and our children. But I thank all of you. I, I really appreciate it from a distance learning mom. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Amy Carpenter, you should be unlocked.
Hi, thank you. I'm a parent of a third grader and a kindergartner. And I wanna thank the teachers, the staff, the administration for your dedication. And I want you to know that I appreciate, appreciate all of your hard work. And I want to commend the superintendent, the administrators and the committee members for your honesty in explaining the current situation and choosing to proceed with caution. I fully support the hybrid model because North Smithfield has found a healthy balance. My third grader and kindergartner are learning and they are already building relationships with their teachers so far. I would just like you to further explain from the comments tonight, how you, would you maintain proper distancing with having all the kindergartners return? I'm just a little concerned about that. Are you gonna be adding extra classrooms, extra space? Since things are going so well as it is, I'm, I'm worried about changing that.
I'll, I'll, I'll answer this. One of the, one of the reason, one of the ways that kindergarten is most eligible to return is because with the amount of stu, of, of parents who are doing distance learning, our average class size in kindergarten in person will be 14 students, which we can maintain six feet. As much as little kindergartners running around, you know, can maintain distance, you know, we, 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 that, that 14 student within our square footage of a classroom, that is six feet.
Okay, so you think at this time it will stay with the 14 and six feet?
Yes, unless there's a, a huge flood of distant learning families that now wanna come in person. You know, right now, our, our numbers would be, and Jen, if you would like to.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, Mike. I just wanted to say, Mrs. Carpenter, that our kindergarten cohort as a whole is, is fairly smaller this year. A lot of parents did opt for private kindergarten, so our kindergarten numbers are lower. And even if distance learners came back, we, at, right now, our number is only at nine distant learners for K. So even if they came back, our numbers in kindergarten are, are very, very small. We can maintain the social distancing in K.
Oh, thank you so much. It makes me feel so much better.
I do need your little, your little lady with us full time. I mean, she and I are best friends. I don't know if you've heard that yet.
Oh, I know. And you think you could also maintain that distance within lunch? Because I know lunch is a huge issue, not just within the school, not just for kindergarten.
Yep, absolutely. That was one of the things that Mrs. Salvatore and I did last Friday was we went through the lunchroom. And by adding our kinders back, we do have some open tables, so that's why we're really looking at that K1 cohort.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next is Kendra M. Kendra, you can unlock yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I don't wanna get too wordy, but I just wanted to say thank you so much to our teachers, the superintendent and the school committee. I think you guys are doing a great job of trying to make sure everybody can come back to school safely. I'm the mother of a fifth grader. He's doing really well with the hybrid model. He loves his teacher. And I just wanted to express my support for what you're doing and say that I'm in support of continuing with the hybrid model until it's safe for everybody to go back to school.
Thank you.
Next is Jason again. Jason, are you there?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent, members of the school committee. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide our input and our thoughts on the situation as they ultimately impact our children. I am a parent of a kindergarten student who has an IEP and is in special ed. And I also have the opportunity to stay home with him and work at home and help him through school. So on the positive, you know, the teachers are doing an unbelievable job. I can't say enough about my son's teacher, Mrs. Klein. She's amazing. But on the flip side, I also see the struggles that my son is going through and the depression that's hitting him when he doesn't get something right away, when he's struggling to write and really doesn't have someone who's not a parent looking at him and kind of walking through how to fix it. I mean, let's face it, kids don't like their parents telling them what to do, even at a five-year-old. Where with a teacher, there's a, a level of respect that they're more willing to listen to. So, you know, I fully support that kindergarten goes back. And if that's kind of off the table for health reasons, I would strongly urge that you consider children with IEPs go back because it is detrimental to them. And I'm, my wife and I are at the point now where we're thinking, if this continues, are we going to have to keep him back because he's not progressing? And that is a major concern of mine. Now, my, my, the second point that I'd like to make is I am a data analyst. I'm in charge of an analytics group. And I know we, I've heard some comments about the numbers that the state has been reporting for cases and we're on the uptick and everything. And I would like to err on the side of caution of that. Being a data analyst, you know, I, I can tell you that given a data set, I can tell two very, very different stories and persuade people to believe either A or B based on what facts I put into that analysis. Now, a lot of the numbers that are coming out of the state, I'm skeptical of because they're constantly missed, they're misrepresented and they have to restate numbers every other week. So I would be extremely hesitant to go by exactly what's said without really taking a deeper look into saying, okay, well, we have COVID cases are on the rise, okay? But are they, what, what, what's going on with them? Are they asymptomatic? Are they symptomatic hospitalizations? How can you differentiate between the flu and COVID? To the best of my knowledge, there is not a test that can accurately differentiate between the two of them. So I would just like to say, you know, to, to all committee members and all parents and everything, just err on the side of caution on what you're being fed from the media because there is a narrative behind it. Whether we choose to believe it or not, we're not getting all the facts. Things are being left out. People who have died from COVID, did they have other underlying conditions? We're not being told that. If so, was it the underlying condition that caused the person's death or was it strictly COVID? Again, that's information that is not provided on a per patient level where we can accurately make our own conclusion as to how deadly this virus is with a 99.3, I believe, percent survival rate. I'm just very skeptical on what's being provided. So, members of the school committee, Mr. Superintendent, parents, faculty, thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my opinion. And I look forward to hearing your solution.
Thank you.
Next is Kyle Santos. Kyle, you should be all set.
Hello. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I'm a parent of two children in North Smithfield. I have a seventh grader and a fourth grader. But I'm also an educator in another district. And I'm actually, my district is currently all virtual learning due to the ventilation issues. And we are preparing to transition to hybrid on the 13th. And I'm a part of the leadership team that meets regularly to make those plans. And I'm often sharing information from what I know of what's happening with my own children's experience in North Smithfield as reference to help my district make their plans better. So I just, I wanted to share that. And I also wanted to support the fact that we stay in hybrid at this point because I think that it was very enlightening to me yesterday when my sister-in-law told me, who I have, my niece and nephew are in the preschool at NSCS. And so when she called me yesterday and kind of let me know, and I had already seen the email anyway, about what was, what was going on, immediately I thought, oh man, when was the last time my kid, when did we see them last? You know, when were the last times my kids were interacting with them? And even while I was at work today, I thought, oh man, maybe I should pack all of these folders for these meetings that I have this week just in case for some reason I'm gonna have to be home. And so just thinking about like the widespread impact that on not just, just every district and every family that these decisions have, you know, if we can mitigate the odds that the exposure is happening, I think that that's very important. And additionally, while I know it's super inconvenient for parents to be managing this hybrid situation, at least it's a consistent and understood schedule and our kids are not, the odds are better in our favor that the kids can still participate and be out and about and doing other things. You know, when my, I can speak from experience that my, it was really, my son was a different person last year in the spring. I didn't even recognize him. And this year, it is much better because he has, he is out. He's able to participate in some of his sports. He is able to go to school those two days a week and socialize. And so I think about the idea of going into a two-week kind of lockdown for, you know, for a quarantine again. And, you know, that it would be incredibly disruptive for all of us and so both for social emotional reasons and if it's, you know, unexpected and then, you know, to drop everything and have to figure that all out. Right now, the schedule and the routine, while inconvenient, is that it is a routine and we are making it work. And so I think that staying in hybrid at this time is the right choice while always continuing to analyze the data and the situation at hand. So, thank you.
I, I'd like to make a motion to bill the district that Mrs. Santos works in for the, the work, our work that she's sharing with them and the amount of time that it saves. Since we don't have state aid to education and money is a little short, I would like the other district to reimburse us for our time. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Next, next person is Kelly. Kelly, you should be unlocked.
Hi, yes. I just wanted to start off by thanking everybody for all the hard work that you guys have been putting in. I just had a quick question. If we were to go back to full in-person, will families still have the option to do any type of hybrid model? Or will it be full in-person or full distant learning? And I only ask because of my job. It took us a lot to try to figure everything out to get a plan in place to start up the school year between my husband's job and my job, taking time off to take turns doing distant learning at home. So my job is flexible, but to ask to have to like switch everything around again is, might be a little difficult. So I'm just trying to understand if we'll have other options or just those two.
At this stage, and we have discussed that third option, at this stage, certainly as everybody is getting used to the hybrid and the in-person, we don't wanna leave everybody out. To add a third rail to our teachers who are now going to be juggling distance learning kids, hybrid kids in certain days, certain off, and then all in days, it, 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 it becomes very difficult. But, but we are looking at that. The, the other thing is, is that when we have a mix of hybrid students plus in-person students, if it's full in-person, we're breaking stable groups. You know, now we have people who are going across two different stable groups. So, so again, it, it, it's really an instructional, a planning and then maintaining stable groups. However, yes, we, we, we are looking at that as a possibility and it is something that we have discussed. And, and again, I just, just wanna stress, we're, we're not necessarily saying no to anything. We're looking at all options and all possibilities and exploring anything that we can to bring as many students in, yet maintain, you know, a little bit of freedom, flexibility and safety along the way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Last person that's on there is Redford. Redford, you should be all set to go. Redford? Redford, last chance. Mr. Lombardi, everybody who has raised their hand to speak has been given the opportunity.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll shut down that portion. I, I did want to speak last. I didn't want to speak before the public in regards to my position. But I just want to, wanted to put it on the record now, although I probably should have said it earlier. I know a lot less people are on, on, on the call now. But Superintendent, I, I just want to make sure you know that our district is doing an outstanding job. It's probably doing the best, and I don't want to compare it with the other places in the state, but it's doing, let's just say, an outstanding job. I think we're doing everything correctly. I rely on the administration. I have 100% confidence in the administration. And as many people know, I lean to get back to full-time student learning. And obviously, we need to do that safely. I rely on your expertise in opening K, K, and one, moving forward to reevaluate is something that I fully support. I know that, you know, this hy, hybrid model is a very good model. I support the model. But I just think that there are some kids that don't excel in distant, district, distance learning. We will reevaluate this in a few weeks. We'll call a public meeting. And obviously, the safety of our children are paramount. And I don't know the answer to this question, and I, I have raised it in the past. Maybe we just need to be conscious of it. You know, there is clearly increased childhood depression, lonely, loneliness, lack of camaraderie, lack of physical activities, children being left alone, parents unable to work. And we're going to see, you know, coming down the pipe, some financial, I think, I think the financial situation of many people are going to get worse and not better, unfortunately. So those are just things that we, you know, I want everybody to think about. And again, if, maybe we can give a little, you know, if at a minimum, we know children are home at home, maybe we can spend more time with other children or our own children, or just be conscious of it. You know, I know what's going on. I don't know how to, how to deal with it. It's above my pay grade, but I just wanted to make those statements.
Thank you. And fully agree.
So does any school committee member want to speak? So I don't know who's on right now. I can't see. But this, this, let me ask this. Does anyone want to make a motion to support the recommendations of the superintendent?
Jim, they're all, they're all locked. Hold on, let me unlock them all.
All right. I can be a little nervous, Superintendent.
Steve takes his role as Zoom bouncer seriously.
They should be able to unmute themselves, so.
Yeah, we can now.
So moved.
Second.
Can you tell us what the actual recommendations are?
So we would like to have Ms. Dano reach out to the kindergarten and first grade families and, and begin moving to bring kindergarten back starting next week and first grade the following week.
Great, thank you.
And then we will meet in two weeks and the superintendent will give us his evaluation in what the next steps are.
Yes.
But didn't I, didn't you say something about the fifth and the sixth? Weren't you looking to bring the fifth and the sixth in?
Right now, again, multiple models. I'd like to just start with K and one, and five and six, or any other grade levels will be part of the, the next step.
Okay, so motions made and seconded. Does anybody want to have any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, not, not a discussion, but chair members of the committee, not a discussion, but I just hope that, you know, some of the other things we raised can be discussed, not tonight. But I mean, like I said, I talked about the seniors earlier, someone else mentioned that, you know, and I know, I know we have to go in stages, but I always feel that those kids will lose a lot out because it's their last year. I don't want it to be like the kids this past year had. So again, that's not for tonight, but I'm going to keep saying that. And I mentioned the Virtual Academy. I want to at least keep those issues up for consideration. Okay?
Yeah, I think the superintendent is taking everything into consideration, superintendent, and we'll, we'll get, we'll kind of have an update in two weeks. I mean, this is an ever-changing, day-by-day model that we're using. And, and, you know, again, the district's doing an outstanding job. I have 100% confidence in them. And I know the superintendent will look at everything that he can possibly look at and, you know, obviously reach out to him if he have any questions.
I didn't mean to suggest that he wasn't, that the superintendent wasn't looking at that. I just wanted to reiterate the points. I know that they're looking, that he and the administration are looking at it.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? I can't necessarily see if anybody's waving their hand. Ms. Reston?
I just want to take one moment to thank everybody for being on the call. I know it's been a long meeting. It's been a long time since I've sat in on a meeting that's lasted this long. But I do appreciate all the parents that came to this meeting that willingly spoke up and weren't afraid to tell us their concerns and their praises. And I think that's very, very important for all of us to hear, for the educators that are on, as well as the school committee. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. So I don't see anyone else with their hand up.
We have to vote, right?
To vote.
We need to vote, right?
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Any further business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion been made, motion been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.